Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners Monday, July 17, 2023 Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to read an invocation from Cindy Simpson. She was going to be here this evening. All Saints Episcopal Church, she had an unexpected commitment over the area today, but she left these words with us. May we bow our heads. "God of all peoples whose lives and work, who live and work in this county, we thank you for your passion for life that brought this beautiful place into being and breathed a life into our very souls. Bless us with your wisdom, grace, and abiding love, that we may serve the common good to the best of our abilities, and may magnify your presence in and around us in our deliberations this evening. In the name of all we call holy, we pray, amen." May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
I'd like to recognize a few folks that are with us this evening. We have Superintendent Steve Bassnight here with us this evening from School Board. Superintendent, thank you for being here. We have Ron Payne, who is Chairman of the School Board, is with us this evening. We also have Murray Ellen Balance, a School Board member here with us. And we also have Mr. Bill Coleman, who is head of the SPCA here in Dare. Thank you all for being here with us this evening. That brings us to County Manager.
Chairman, item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
I just have one item to present this evening. On behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, it's an honor for us this evening to recognize some outstanding young ladies in our community. On June 3, the Manio Women's Varsity Soccer Team won the state 2A Soccer Championship for the first time in team history, ascending to that pinnacle with a 5-3 win over the defending state champions, Wheatmore. So these young ladies have been together for some, quite some time. Unfortunately, Coach Ralph Cleaver is not able to be with us, a couple of other assistant coaches, but we do have one assistant coach here with us tonight, Ryan Carusa. Ryan, thank you for being here this evening. Congratulations. Not only are we recognizing the ladies, we're recognizing these coaches that have done a remarkable job to bring these ladies to this point. This historic win made the town of Manio come alive with pride and excitement. And one person envisioned this achievement some time ago, and he's one of the assistant coaches, Tony, and I'm gonna mess his last name up. Is his daughter here?
No.
Okay. Calavia?
Calvia.
Calavia. And he's volunteered his time for over six years since these girls came to be on the Manio High School championship team. They were eight and 10 years old when he was monitoring these women, young ladies, when they were in middle school. And one of the things he's told them was that, "All I want is for this team to be successful, and I want the middle school to win something." Well, he said he wanted the girls to be confident within themselves, and I want them to be strong, I want them to be tough, so that we can move forward, and hopefully someday they can achieve something. Well, his dream came true, and your dreams and hard work, as young ladies from middle school all the way up through high school, has certainly come to fruition. So at this time, I'd like to come down front and make a presentation. I promise you, this is not a bunch of beer cans. Come on, ladies, y'all come right across the front here, so we can get a wide-angle shot of all you pretty ladies up here. This is a certificate of appreciation to you ladies, on behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, to Manio High School Women's Soccer Team. And it says, "To congratulate the Manio Redskins players and coaches for winning the 2023-24 North Carolina High School Athletic Association Women's Soccer Championship against the Westmoreland Warriors with a score of 5-3 on Saturday, June 3, 2023. The Dare County Board of Commissioners salutes the Manio Redskins for their hard work, dedication, and extraordinary efforts that led to this tremendous accomplishment, of which the entire Dare County community is immensely proud." So I present this to the coaches, so that they'll have a nice place to put this in Manio High School. And then we've got something individual for each one of you ladies to remember this day. I will say this. My youngest son got a soccer scholarship to North Carolina Wesleyan. Now, that's a Division III school, which does not give sports scholarships. Fortunately, he was an honor grant, so they gave him an academic scholarship so he could play soccer at North Carolina Wesleyan. That is not out of the realm of possibilities for any of you young ladies right here this evening, especially what you have accomplished as a team. So I wish you the very best moving forward, and I present this to your coach.
Thank you.
And we've got some individual little things here to hopefully remember Dare County's appreciation for all your hard work.
I just want to say thank you so much to all of Dare County. The support and dedication you've shown to us has been outstanding. These girls are the strongest, hardest-working group of young ladies that I've ever met. I mean, I'm proud of them. I know their parents are beyond proud of them, and when they set their minds to something, they go out and they do it. And it's rare to have that kind of hard work, dedication, commitment, self-belief, self-desire these days. So I couldn't be more proud of them, and we're only losing a couple, so hopefully we'll come back here next year.
All right. Let's repeat. Congratulate you. Good work. Good work. Now, who's coming back?
She's the only one.
Oh, you're a senior. You're a senior. Where are you going to school?
UNC Charlotte.
Oh, right, UNC Charlotte. They might need a soccer player, right? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, it's always a special pleasure to give special recognition to our students and our youth in our community. We hear so much about negative stuff. We've really, we're fortunate, and we're blessed to have such a good community and nice young ladies such as this to win such a prestigious honor. With that, I would like to do an adjustment to our agenda this evening. I'd like to move item 17 to item 4B, so that we can accommodate some folks here that they don't have to sit around all night just to get through the agendas of... Do I have a motion to do that?
Do so.
Motion by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. County Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda. This is where we give our service pins. We only have one tonight. Our service pin is for Aaron Felton, and Aaron will receive his 25-year pin from Sheriff Doug Downey.
Good evening, everyone. This is Aaron Felton. When you said that about the 25 years, I said, "Well, we won't be the first one to come, but here we are with 25 years." At least we showed up and were proud to be here with him. He said, "Okay, bud, let's go get this done." Always ready. But Aaron started, he went to BLET December, or finished December 12, 1997. So he's been working around here a long time, and we're glad to have him. He was sworn in on July 20, 1998, and he's worked Hatters the whole time. I was trying to remember, you know, Sheriff Austin could have done this and named 20 storms right back to back to back to back, but I can't remember, you know, putting the name with the time. But I was trying to figure out, me and Aaron, they hotbeded us, didn't hotbed me and him in the same room, but he was living in Hatters, and we had gone down after Isabel, right, in September 6, 2003. I didn't realize my birthday was two days later, and I was spending it with you, apparently, not up here, you know, where I needed to be. So I got to know Aaron really good during that time. I think we were down there almost a week, and we can have 10 days. And, you know, and learned a lot about him. We were paired up in the same car, riding, and couldn't travel very far, because of so much water and sand. We had a very limited area that we could do, but I learned a lot about Aaron. I think he learned a lot about me, and we had a really good time, and we became fast friends. Aaron's done a great job. He is, that's home to him, kind of. He's been there just about the whole time he has been in law enforcement, so no doubt he enjoys the island. And then in August of 26 of 2013, he became my SRO officer at Cape Palace Elementary School. So he's been right at it for about 10 years and done an excellent job. You know, he's grown up, knows everybody on the island. I was trying to figure out how he did all that, but now, in looking at how long he's been in there, he's watched most of them grow up and knew the parents. So he is, he's well-known down there, and he knows everybody there is to know, and if you need to know where somebody's at, if he can't find them right quick, he can make a phone call and put his hands on them pretty quickly. He's done a great job for us. He's a good guy. He loves kids, no doubt about it, or he wouldn't be doing what he's doing, and he's done a fine job in the school system. He's getting close. He's got about five more. I don't know which one of us is going to beat the other one out. We're going just about tied there with four or five years. And I know you're going to go at 30, no doubt about it probably, and we'll see what happens. But we have enjoyed you. We thank you for everything you do. I know you've got these good five years left in you, that's your 25 years, but his wife and his little girl's wife's name's Danielle, his little girl is Ellen. They're in the back. By there, they made the trip up. I think they pushed him to come. That's why we got somebody here tonight. We're glad they did. Very nice. Thank you, Aaron. We appreciate it, and thank you all very much.
Chairman, item three, our Employee of the Month. He could not be here today. We'll do that one in September. He's got conflicts this month and next month, so we'll do that in September, which moves us down to item four for public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name, tell us where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. On the podium, there's a light. The green light will come on when your time begins. There's a yaw light that will come on when there's about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, I have, first on here is Jennifer Hammer.
Welcome, Ms. Hammer.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Jennifer Hamner, and I am here on behalf of Liberty Christian Fellowship and Camp Emmanuel. I am the facilities operation manager and camp administrator, and we just wanted to give you guys an update on our building project. It's been a while since we've been here, and so we're just wanting to share the progress we've made. Since the last time we were here and you guys actually approved the building plans, we have been actively raising funds. At this point, we've raised 1.1 million of our 4 million projected budget, and with that, we've already started moving forward. So we completed our first phase, which was acquiring our building supplies, which are there, the steel building. We are now working into Phase Two. Our Phase Two is the process of doing the groundwork, everything from getting the plumbing in the ground, laying the cement pad, and then drying in the building, and then we're going to continue from that point on. Just for inquiring minds, maybe part of the reason why it's taking so long, I've had people ask that. Liberty Christian Fellowship has made a commitment to not doing this in debt, so that we can steward our finances and our funds in our programming and ministry and pouring into our community. Quick math, I did it the other night, was even just 5% on $1 million is 50 grand. So we're doing this, and so that's why our capital campaign is so important. Our church family has really rallied around and has shown up, and we are continuing to do that. So I believe if you don't have it yet, there is even some additional information for you guys to see what the floor plan looks like, what our process is, and you can learn more about the building and our hope. So we know that with this building, it's not only going to be the epicenter for the camp programming or for retreats over at Camp Emmanuel, or even an asset for the church community, but it's also, we see all the possibilities and what we plan to do throughout the year through after-school programming or enrichment courses, or even just being a resource to the Collington community when they need to be served. May it be partnering with perhaps the county for emergency response situations, or when we do elections, we can have extra space for things of that sort. And we're really, we're really excited to be able to do that for our community. Also, in a quick update, too, is just, for example, this summer, just in two weeks alone, we had two overnight camps for our local kids. We had 102 overnight, plus an additional 60 kids attending our day camp VBS programming. And of course, because we're a church camp, they learned about Jesus, and we're excited about that, but they also, when you come to camp at Camp Emmanuel, our kids get the chance to unplug from their daily rhythms, from their electronic devices. We get to be present with one another. We get out there, we play, we get messy. We have folks that come and do activities and teach them skills, carpentry, cooking, art, surfing. And our community, yes, sir, and our community, they just rally around us, and we had so many community supporters that, may it be time, talent, or resources showed up for our kids. And so we're excited to watch the program and just grow and do more weeks and to reach more of our kids. So that's where we're at, and we just want to say thank you, Commissioners, for supporting us, and we look forward to sharing more with you. We also, you and everybody else, if you want to learn more about what the kids receive, we're going to be having camp Sunday on August 13 at Liberty Christian Fellowship, and they'll get to share testimonies, and you'll get to hear.
Thank you, Ms. Hamner. One of the things that hit me right between the eyes, what you said, was your kids get to disconnect, and they put these things away.
Yeah.
And that's phenomenal. You know, that is so great to hear.
And they live to tell about it.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right. Any more, you see them riding a bicycle, walking down a bike path, like this, you know?
Yes, sir.
That's great to hear.
Yes, sir.
That's phenomenal, to disconnect and communicate with one another and have a good time.
Yes, sir.
So that's, it's phenomenal what you guys are doing, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you did. Thank you. Next on the list is Bill Coleman.
Welcome this evening, Bill.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to come and stand before you. I want to give you an update about what's going on at the Outer Banks SPCA, the Dare County Animal Shelter. Got some exciting things. First, I want to tell you a little bit of Operation Homeless Cats, since you all are helping to fund that. We've done over 450 cats at this point, so 450 feral cats not reproducing in our community, which is a nice thing, which also means we've got less kittens over there, which was really the driving goal for us. We've got less kittens, and we're still out there, we kind of can't do as much in the summer, but we'll start again gearing up in the fall. I'm happy to say we've got a community foundation grant for our Dog Enrichment Center, and if you go behind our building, we have a little area that's now fenced in, and we have dog enrichment toys and things to help train animals. It's a space that we can also use for community events. It's an outdoor space, and it's a place where they can do meet and greet for dogs. So it's a nice new space that we've got together there. Thirdly, I'm most excited that we have hired a part-time veterinarian. This is a goal that our board had this year, and we got it done before the year was over. We've hired Andrea Newman. She spent 30 years practicing in McLean, Virginia, and retired to the Outer Banks. She was named a Northern Virginia Top Veterinarian in 2017, and I think we really got somebody that maybe was better than we would have hoped to get. But what's her, she's going to basically work with our animals and just do at least the minor care. We'll still be working with the other vets, because we're not buying any kind of X-ray machine or dental thing, so we're doing the minor treatments there, but she will be able to spay and neuter in our facility. And as part of that, we're converting one of the spaces, which was my office, to a surgery center. And so we've, working with the ASPCA, which has a unit in Raleigh, no, I'm sorry, in Asheville, and they've given us initial startup costs for all the equipment we'll need. They've even done floor plans for us, so we're trying to move ahead with that. It's about $30,000 in equipment to get us launched in terms of doing spay and neuters, but all this stuff, I think, will save us money in the long term. But we're very excited about that, and I think we'll just, we could just continue to get better, and thanks for all your support in making this happen.
Thank you for that update, Bill.
So with this minor surgical center, there would be a lot of outside, let's say, normal surgeries through local vets that won't need to go outside. They could be done internal to the shelter.
Yeah, the minor stuff would be, yes.
So that would be a cost offset.
Absolutely.
Okay. That sounds good, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
That's all that I have on my list. Anyone else here for public comment? Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Is there anyone from Buxton that'd like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
At that, Mr. Chairman, we close public comment, and we'll move item number 17.
Hold on a minute, County Manager. Before we go to item 17, I overlooked a School Board member that is also here this evening. Matt, I apologize, I didn't see you sitting out there, but thank you for being here as well. County Manager?
All right. That leads us to number 17, that we moved up to 4B, and this is the Dare Education Foundation and Teacher Housing. Over the last couple of years, we've been working hard with two groups trying to get some kind of workforce housing going here in Dare County. And during that process, we've also had some conversations with various members of the School Board and the Superintendent about the trials and tribulations they're having hiring teachers and having a place to house them and losing good, qualified applicants that they can't get to come here because they don't have anywhere to live, and have been trying to find ways to solve some of their problems as well. We talked with them, gosh, probably six months ago, and they had worked out, or they had a plan with the Dare Education Foundation where there was a possibility they could add on down in Kill Devil Hills, but they were having funding problems and didn't know when or how or if that could be done. And then more recently, they met with me and with the folks from Coastal Affordable Housing to see if there was something that we could do jointly with them to try to find a way to accommodate teachers in some of the projects that we got going forward. With that sort of background, the idea to work with Coastal Affordable Housing, while it could work in the long term, isn't going to work in the short term because of some of the problems we've got moving that project forward and the more immediate need that the schools have for their teachers. In our most recent conversations, they told us that they, basically, if they were about $1 million short of the funding that they needed in order to build from nine to 12 units, add it on to the current housing that they have there in Kill Devil Hills. From that conversation, the Capital Improvement Committee met about all of our capital needs. This was sort of put on the list as yet another capital project that we needed to think about. And with Dave's help, we were able to find $1 million in our fund balance to try to help them move that project along, independent of our other workforce housing needs, to try to, from a timing perspective, get their project going forward faster than we're able to get these much larger projects going. And so from that, I've talked with the Superintendent. He's met with the Dare Education Foundation. They're telling us that if we can come up with this $1 million to help augment what they're doing, then they're in a position to get that project going, subject to their discussions with their lender, which they think will be favorable as well. So this is on the agenda for you all to approve use of the fund balance to cover that $1 million COVID and the occupancy tax has been good to us, and so we have those funds available. They don't take away from anything else that we're doing, and so it's something that we can afford to do if you all choose to do it. So that's what's before you tonight. I know that the Chairmen's here, the Superintendents here, I don't know if they want to add anything to any that I've just said, but with that, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or if I can't, they can.
Anyone have any questions of the Board Chair or the Superintendent?
No. I'd like to move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the Dare Education Foundation teacher housing portion for $1 million bucks, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. The floor is open for further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, add to that motion and authorize the manager to move those funds out of the fund balance.
The budget amendments are in the agenda.
In the agenda, okay.
In the agenda, okay.
Okay, great.
All right.
Just like to say, Chairman, that this is a $1 million well-spent, the work that we've done trying to own this housing for the last two or three years. If we can get 12 units out of this million, we'll be tickled to death.
Amen. Amen.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Now it's official, guys.
I think I heard Commissioner Toman chime in, did I?
We did.
Yeah.
We did.
Commissioner Toman.
Correct. He was the voice of God.
All right. That moves us down to number five on the agenda. Thank you all for coming. Number five on the agenda is a report from the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and Kay White and Sue Kelly are here for that presentation.
Kay, good evening, and thank you for being here. Sue Kelly, Sue, thank you.
Thank you for having us here to give an update on the report, and we have a new PowerPoint, which I'm going to try to work through with you guys. We've been revising ourselves, getting a new image since we were sort of dormant during COVID, although we did have a lot of Zoom calls in between, but we've had three meetings since we've been able to come back since COVID. So let's start our presentation here. First, I want to explain why we need the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and then we will talk about the structure, and then have any questions that you might have. and then, we will talk about the structure and then have any questions that you might have. First, we need to know what's happening with aging in North Carolina. I'm sure you've heard it a lot, but basically, there's the map that shows you how old we're getting. It's because we're becoming such a popular state for retirement, probably. We are in the top 10 of the national population ratings, and we're also number eight in the national rankings of people age 65 and over. So, there are more people over 60 than under 18 years of age right now in our state. The next slide you do have in the material, which I have passed out to you in the brochure there, you'll have this slide that you can hold on to, showing the older population legislation and how much we've grown. You can see on the red side is the age 60 in 1900. It was only 5% of the population. By 2030, we're going to be 26%. The budget trend, however, when you see the yellow line, there's 182% increase in the needs of the people, but the decrease in funding has actually decreased in that period from 2004 to 2022. So, that money we're talking about that comes from the North Carolina Home and Community Care Block Grant, which is a portion of federal funds and county funds, but we're asking the state to put more money into the county portion of those funds. The Senior Tar Heel Legislature was created by the North Carolina Assembly 30 years ago, and I'll be telling you a little bit more about our 30th birthday party after these remarks. The bill was sponsored by Senator Beverly Perdue, and it was representation from all of the 100 counties. The purpose of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature is to provide education and information to our senior citizens and gets their input on things that we want to advocate for them at the General Assembly. What is the Senior Tar Heel Legislature? We are all volunteers, and we are 60 years or older, and we are tasked by the General Assembly to study the challenges and obstacles that are faced by older adults. And we are patterned after the unicameral, which means one body like the General Assembly. The members come from each county, and we do have the Area Agency on Aging that appoints us, but they recommend our names to you, and you actually reappoint us for a two-year period. And we're happy to be of service to our... And thank you for your appointment each time for our term. And officers are then selected at the meeting, and then, we have the guiding structure. We have four officers: the Speaker, Norma Duncan, from Mitchell County; the Pro Tem, Annette Myers, from Granville County; Deputy Speaker Pro Tem, Woody Brinson; and Secretary Gala Woods, from Gaston County. Then, we have the five standing chairs, and then, we have six issues committee. These issues committee are where we get the work done for developing our priorities that go to the legislature. We have a crime safety... This is where the different ideas that come from the people that are volunteers that come to the Senior Tar Heel delegates and alternates. They create these in the even years, and on the odd years, on the even years, we vote for them. They were voted on last October in '22 for the 22-year period, '23 and '24. So, those committees were the crime, safety, and security, the enrichment opportunities, the health, the long-term care and service access. And then, whatever doesn't fall into that group goes into general legislative, and that is what I chair for, the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And this past year, we had 67 priorities or items that people wanted to submit for our five that we get down to. And we had the six-issue committees that went through all those proposals and reduced them to 16. And at that time, those 16 go before all of the delegates at the October meeting, and they decide on five resolutions, and they get voted on at that time. There's a picture of the October General Session, and very small, but you can see in the top right corner there, we have... Sue Kelly was my delegate. I was unable to go in October, and she's standing there and got recognized for comments at that meeting. The offices are in the top left, and they're counting the ballots on the resolutions on that bottom picture. There's more pictures from that particular meeting. The accomplishments during 2022, I was saying we kind of got a new face for us. You can see that the new badges that we're wearing are updated from our little state with our Tar Heel in the middle there. We have new brochures. We redid our bylaw amendments. We increased our public relations outreach, and we continue doing a lot of different virtual and Zoom meetings to get all of this done by also updating our website and our Facebook site. Now, we're to the legislation or priorities, and in your handouts that you have before you now, you have the actual sheets with the detailed information. So, I'm going to go over these very quickly for you tonight because you have the backup for each of those five priorities. That explains why we're asking for what we're doing. Number one is the Adult Protective Services, and it's real important to get more money into that from the state because no money comes down to the county at the moment from the state. It's only from the federal government funding and the county funding. And we know that there's so much more need in the protective services area. It's grown 129% in the last 17 years. So, we're trying to get some money to come down to the county from the state to help with the adult protective services. Second priority is the senior centers. It's unbelievable how little money they're getting, and they can still survive. We're fortunate here in Dare County because the county funds really support our wonderful centers we have here. But in across the state, we have about 169 centers, and some of those centers are only getting $4,000 a year to support their services. And the senior center is the most local area where we can get the adults out and socialize them and keep them active in the community and healthy and hopefully out of facilities. And so, we're trying to get double the amount of recurring funds, really. For right now, they're getting $1,265,000, but we want that to be doubled so that more money can go to the local senior centers. There are centers that are certified, as we have here in Mantio, and when they have a senior center of excellence, they get additional funds, but that's based on the certification and getting those different certifications. So, I was giving you the minimum amount for an uncertified center. The Home and Community Care Block Grant is where all the funds come from when they provide the funds to the home-delivered meals, the transportation, adult daycare, a lot of supportive services. And so, that's important that we get additional funding, we're hoping, from the state to add on to the federal funds that go into that program.
Kay, real quick question.
Sorry?
A quick question for you, Kay.
Sure.
One of the points says we have 10,000 overadults on wait lists waiting for services.
Oh, yes, correct.
What type of services would that be? Not meals or home-delivered meals?
Yes.
Yes.
That is across the state.
Okay.
And that's... Yeah, that's the funding.
Going to jump on it if it was Dare County, okay.
Yes, that's the funds that come from the Home Community Care Block Grant, right. And I can't... I know we have waiting lists here as well, but I don't know the one in... What the Dare County one is. And we're on number four now, which is a long-term care embossment. This is for the paid embossment at the regional level. The federal government says that you need one paid embossment for every 2,000 residents in a long-term care facility, and they found out the state of North Carolina is 17 less than we require to meet that requirement. We have seven... So, they're... We're asking for 1.5 million more funds to hire those additional paid embossment. But then, that comes down to our local... There are volunteers. We have five on the Nursing Home Committee locally that serve as the embossment, and then, we're talking about the paid person from the region. We have one embossment in the region for 10 counties. Can you imagine the work that that person has to do? That's to go in and make sure that all the residents are getting the type of services and being treated fairly. So, basically, embossment is for patients' rights and the residents. Unfortunately, Dare County right now, I must say, has zero on that committee. I looked at it the other day, and I saw no names, and that's very... I served on that committee as chair for eight years before I became your Senior Tar Heel Legislature. So, I'm putting the word out. Anyone in Dare County, we need embossments here to help out with our patients' rights. Number five is our staff-to-resident ratio. Unfortunately, North Carolina does mandate for the LPN and the registered nurse, but there's no mandate in the state for how many CNAs that we need per residence. So, the poor CNAs are very much overworked. When you go in the facility and you talk to the one and tell them how many they have to take care of, how many patients they take care of each day, it's amazing. It is really amazing. So, we definitely need more CNAs, and we're also... Now, this is the only thing... The only legislation that doesn't require funding, actually. We're just asking for some certification of CNAs to say how many need to be staffed in a facility. The physical context of all of this is that, basically, DOS, which is the Division of Aging and Adult Services, expenditures on the Department of Health and Human Services is less than 1%. It's .59. And so, we're trying to get more funding into DOS because the adults 60 and over are 24% of the population right now, about to be 25%, but the total budget is less than .1%. So, you can see we have a lot of work still to do. So, the call to action for the 2022-24 legislative cycle for the Senior Tar Heel Legislature is we will recommend that the North Carolina General Assembly appropriate funds for our five priorities in keeping with the growth of the older population to provide the protections and support that enable them to live with dignity and as much independence as possible. And you guys are helping already. You're supporting us to go to the Senior Tar Heel Legislature and to work with the local people here, and we appreciate that. And we just want you to know that we are here to work with you to make sure Dare County is not only a place to grow up, but a great place to grow old. And we think it is because a lot of people are retiring here. Now, I do have... If you have any other questions right now, but I was going to report just a few comments on my recent meeting, which we had in June, and then, Sue will tell you about the March meeting where she attended as the delegate, and they went to the legislature there. So, for the June meeting, first of all, we had a 30th birthday party at the North Carolina Museum of History in Raleigh. We did have a lot of our representatives, and one senator came there. I invited our local representatives and senators, but they were not able to be present. I will say that locally, Sue and I will host a birthday party at the Baum Center in August and at the Virginia Tillot Center here in September. We'll have our own little 30th birthday party, and we hope that some of you will be able to attend one or both of those. I'll be in touch with you with those dates as soon as they're formed up. And so, that night at our birthday party, we had... Senator Perdue was not able to be there, but Senator of... Secretary of State Elaine Marshall did attend, as she was the co-sponsor of that bill 30 years ago, creating the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And basically, we just had a lot of presentations and proclamations, but it was a fun party. Then, the next day, we met all day from 9:00 to 4:00 the next day with our business. And at that point, the main thing that came out of that meeting, because it was very new, was the co-sponsor... I'm sorry, a bill that was put forth, not a bill, a proclamation, by the governor, making the state of North Carolina a state that is... Trying to think of the exact words, executive order highlighting what our state is going to be one of seven in the country that's becoming age-friendly. And the name of that... Oh, multi... Here it is. Multi-sector plan for aging, and they're calling it All Ages, All Stages. Now, that's only going to be over about an 18-month period, but they are going to have all the divisions... Sorry, all the divisions across the state are going to be involved, including parks and agricultural areas, to make sure that we can become more aging-friendly because of the number of aged people, obviously, in our area that are moving into North Carolina. So, that was a big thing. The area that we'll be looking at are strengthening communities for a lifetime, supporting older adults and their families, optimizing our health and well-being, and making it affordable to age here. So, that's a big thing. And then, our treasure of the state, Dale Folwell, was also there to talk to us and tell us that North Carolina is one of 12 states in the nation to obtain a AAA bond rating by all three major agencies, and that it also... We're number one in business ranking. So, that's why so many people want to move here now, I think. So, wanted to let you know, we're a robust state financially. We're just hoping enough gets to go to the seniors. And with that, I'm going to have Sue come forward and tell you about the March meeting. And thank you so much for your attention, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them either now or after her remarks.
Kay, let me...
Yeah, I have a question, Kay. Do you... For the things that you all are trying to get done through the legislature, do you have some of the guys, elected people up there that are champions, that are working as champions for what you're trying to get accomplished? What I'm saying is, do you have some legislators up there that are on your side, that are pushing hard for the things you want to do? Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I mean, that's who you're trying to encourage to?
Yes. We do. They're not local, I must say.
That's okay.
But we do have some champions that are working with some of our delegates, and I can't give you their names right now. But we're definitely trying to promote, like, the ones on the Health and Services Committee and those kind of committees. And there are some champions there, but not quite enough at the moment.
Gotcha.
But I can get you their names.
I was just curious, did you have somebody working up there?
Yes, we do.
With that crowd?
And yes, and we have some people in the Raleigh area that are in the legislature, probably weekly.
Good. Thank you.
Kay, along that same line, are our legislators, our local legislators in the Senate and House, are they aware of these Senior Tar Heel legislators' recommendation priorities, and has this information been shared with them?
Yes.
It has.
Now, I haven't talked to the senator yet, but... And because everybody changed last November, even our representative is different from the one that we had. November, even our representative is different from the one that we had before. So I, I have sent them the information, I haven't talked with them personally.
Okay.
They've received it on an email.
Well, the reason I ask is that, you know, how can we help if we can, we can share that information in our concern? I mean, these numbers that you're sharing with me, 85 counties?
Yes.
You know, 60 and above, I presume what's causing those numbers to be so high is certainly the baby boomer population.
Right.
That's, that's, that's what hits me between the eyes already.
Right.
Because I'm part of that community, but I guess that's what.
And the fact that North Carolina is so attractive right now, because we're the only state, I believe, that got a new House of Representative person in the U.S., and California lost one, North Carolina gained one from our population. So that shows that we're the most popular state right now.
Right.
People want to move to.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed to lobbying our legislators on your behalf.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your support, and I'll certainly let you know after I talk to our local people, okay?
Thank you, Kay.
Yeah.
And most importantly, thank you for your years.
And here's Sue to tell you about her legislative visit.
Right, but I want to thank you and Sue both for your years of dedicated towards this. This has just been a true blessing to have someone of your caliber pushing for seniors. Thank you for your years of service of doing that.
I appreciate that so much. Glad to do it.
Sue?
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman Woodard and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you and for Kay and I to share information with you about the state tarheel legislature. I promised to be very brief and also to speak a little bit, Mr. Chairman, to your issue about our relationship with our legislators, because that was the meeting that I went to, the meeting before last. There were three statewide meetings held by STEEL. I kind of like to call it steel. North Carolina State Tarheel Legislature is kind of a mouthful, so I just kind of refer to it as steel, as many people do. But there are three meetings that are, that are held, and March, June, and October. So in March, I had the great opportunity to represent Dare County, and I thank you all for the opportunity to do that and to work with Kay. And so the main part of that meeting was, since the legislature was in session, we were all tasked with getting meetings with our various elected representatives. And I think the whole process came together very well. This organization may be 30 years old, but I believe now that it is really moving into its time that there will be more people that will know what steel is and will appreciate what it will do and will help us do what we want to do. So we had, we were all directed to get meetings set up. Our region is Region R, there are 10 counties in it. Our headquarters office is in Hertford. We are, I understand, the largest size geographically, but not by population, of all the regions in steel. I had the privilege to have a meeting with Senator Norman Sanderson, District One, who represents us, and I have to say, it was a most pleasant meeting. For much of my working career, I worked with the Virginia Legislature. I was a registered lobbyist for the teachers. And we do not call ourselves in steel lobbyists, we are advocates. So more than once, somebody has corrected me for referring to myself or to somebody else as a lobbyist, but we're advocates. And I, I think I understand why that terminology, although I certainly was a registered lobbyist, but not for the corporate state when I was in Virginia. But if I had to say something overall, I felt like that the Raleigh situation was just a little bit less hectic than Richmond, that the people we reached out to were a little bit more responsive. We ended up meeting with all three of the folks that represent all or part of this county, and they were excellent meetings, where they listened to us, they were very interested in what we had to say. And I do believe that we will be developing these people as advocates for the people that we're working for, as you talked about, Mr. Chairman, because that's really important. I want to say that I'm looking forward to continuing to do this. I also look forward to the time when there will be an opportunity for those of us, Kay and myself and others who are working with steel, to work with you for the, some of the same goals, and that we can go together to seek things, because that is our desire to achieve these things for our citizens, especially in light of what Kay has just shared with us about how our population is somewhat changing. It was a great opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity to have done so. I thank you for the opportunity to work with Kay. I think all of you know what a fantastic job Kay has done and is doing for this county through steel and a lot of other areas. She's a hard worker, and it's a pleasure to work with her, and it's a pleasure to represent Dare County at the state tarheel legislature. Thank you very much for that opportunity, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Sue?
Sir?
Thank you. Vice Chairman just whispered in my ear, which I think you're aware, we have some folks in Raleigh that certainly lobby for us.
Yes.
And we can certainly reach out to that group and ask them for, if they can help us with this as well. So we'll, we'll do what we can to try to push those legislative providers, but also we'll reach out to our lobbyist up there as well.
That'd be great.
And, and once again, thank you as well for, for your dedication to this. We're fortunate to have you two ladies fighting for our senior citizens.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to do so.
Anyone else?
And we'd be more than happy to work with any of the folks that are working on issues for Dare County. Be a real pleasure. One of the things we did in March was that we did training for folks who perhaps had never been involved in advocating directly with their legislatures. So it's a process. I think we got off to a great start, and we look forward to continuing to build, building the relationship and achieving our goals.
Sue, when are the other two meetings? You said was March, and then what was?
June and October.
Some of the numbers that really struck home, and correct me, Kay, Sue, I think you said it's 169 facilities in the state, is that right?
Yes, of the senior centers.
Yeah, senior centers, you break it down, and they're getting like four grand?
Yes, the lowest, if they're not certified.
Right.
Because if they divide it out, they only have very small numbers, if they divide out most of all, all the senior centers.
Gotcha.
If you add up everything that steel is advocating for that costs money, which of course it all costs money, it is amazingly small percentage of the overall state budget.
Right.
That these issues.
Listen, Sue, we're quite aware of, well, aware of what the surplus is in the state, trust me. We're, we're well aware of what that number is. So they could do, they could certainly do better.
Yes, sir.
Do you all put together any kind of voting blocks?
In terms of legislators or counties working together?
I'm talking about people that vote, because that gets their attention.
Yeah. One out of four.
That gets their attention.
Well, I think to some extent, we are just beginning to do some of this, and I believe now that as a result of the March meeting, we have a lot of legislators who now understand what we are and who we are and what we want. So every time we reach out to them, it will be easier to get them on board with, with what we're seeking to do. But as you all know, it's a process, and I really feel like this organization is getting ready to take off and to become potentially quite a good force in the state, in the county too.
Should wake some of them's eyes, they're in that age group.
Yeah.
Just about all of them.
That's what I know.
Just about all of them, I'd say, sir.
If I could paraphrase a famous quote from Winston Churchill, "Never have so many asked for so little to the benefit of all above age 60."
Yeah.
And I just, I'm sitting here thinking, there are so many that would benefit from so little, and we have these terrific ladies advocating, I mean, honest to gosh.
That's incredible. We'll certainly do what we can.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. County Manager?
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a resolution advocating increased funding to help landowners improve their property.
We skipped the North Carolina Extension?
I'm sorry, I did.
We need to go back to six.
This is the Dare County Extension Report. Tanya and her team are here for that?
I saw them anxiously looking at you, County Manager.
Well, how could we miss that flash in local?
I know, I know.
As I was talking.
And each of you should have a box. Cheryl's going to get that for you. We have an interactive report to the people in a box, so, but don't open it yet, please.
Well, thank you for being here, Tanya.
Sure, thank you.
So do not open until told.
Chairman of the Board, Commissioners, we thank you for allowing us to present to you today our 2022 Report to the People. I am Tanya Lamo, I'm the County Extension Director for North Carolina Cooperative State Extension, and we're very excited to have the opportunity to share our report to, with you. We're thrilled to share with you the exciting work we do in our community, from supporting small businesses to developing leaders and to promoting sustainability initiatives. Today, we have an interactive presentation planned for you, so you can sit back, relax, and get ready to be inspired by the power of extension in the local community. North Carolina Cooperative Extension extends research-based knowledge to all North Carolinians, helping them transform science into everyday solutions that improve our lives and grow our state, and of course, grow Dare County. In a few minutes, you'll be hearing from our very talented team about the work they accomplished in 2022, and we have three main areas of focus that we work on our programs with, and that is family consumer sciences, 4-H and positive youth development, and consumer horticulture. In 2022, we reached over 117,400 individuals through our various marketing efforts and programs. Our target audience is Dare County residents, of course, but we also like to welcome and encourage visitors that come to Dare County to engage in our programs as well. And we share out the word through our social media efforts, through the press releases, and through our program workshops. So you'll see, we've decided to bring you an element of our programs and have created this interactive report to the people in a box for you to taste and experience a little bit of what we do throughout the year. So you can go ahead and begin opening the box in front of you.
I delivered one of these to Commissioner Tobin, by the way.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. So you'll see, we've decided to bring, to keep our programming efforts focused around the theme of local, where we highlight topics centered around local food, plants, and people. And the infographic that you'll see hanging here captures just a snapshot of some of our impacts and outcomes that we've achieved this last year. And on the backside, we captured some of our success stories that we report out, not just to the state, but also to the federal government. And then at the bottom, on the back of this infographic, it shows who our community partners are, and we just are really thrilled to be able to work with all these various organizations throughout the community. So you may set that aside and take a deeper dive in that later on, if you like. On the top of your box, you'll see a packet of articles, and these are samples of our efforts to highlight the local community, our farmers, our fishermen, our entrepreneurs, and our community supporters. Every other month with our local theme, our administrative assistant, Kim Armstrong, interviews an individual and weaves their story into a wonderful article. And the one on the top is a feature of Tucker Walker. Now, this was just done a few months ago, but we were excited to hear from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau with their push for volunteer tourism and their ability to highlight nonprofit organizations in the, in the community. So they reached out to Extension and asked if we would write an article about a local soft-shell crabber. So Kim contacted Tucker Walker, interviewed him, learned of the whole process, which is completely fascinating, and wrote this beautiful article about him and the soft-shelling crabbing industry. And then they published that on their blog. So we're really excited about that partnership, but there's a few other articles here in this packet. These get published in our monthly newsletter, on our website, and they also get picked up by some local media. So when you have some extra time, I encourage you to read through these, they're beautiful, and they're all about the local community, people here who drive businesses and really support Dare County through many different ways. So as we begin to unpack the box, I'm going to invite Dee for Law up. She is going to share with you about her Family Consumer Sciences program that she did this year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dee for Law, and I'm the Family Consumer Science Agent with Cooperative Extension here in Dare County, as well as in Terrell County. Family Consumer Science Agents provide community-based educational programs that strengthen and transform families by providing education on the important needs of their lives. So my primary outreach is within the areas of foods, nutrition, safety, local foods, and food preservation. And these programs are given throughout the county to a very diverse audience. So on any given day, I might be teaching youth from ages five to 18, participants at the Virginia Tillot Center or the Baum Center, folks who attend Monarch, GEM, or Caregivers' Day Out, and of course, the general public. It's a very diverse audience, all of whom gain knowledge to help themselves and their families live healthier lives. This outreach is really important, because according to the 2021-22 Dare County Community Health Assessment, health behaviors residents need more information about include eating well and nutrition at 20% and managing weight at 11%. Our programs also provide information to improve such health issues as cancer and heart disease, which were number one and number two leading causes of death in Dare County. One example of programming that I did, I did a one-day program on eating the healthy Mediterranean way, and everybody went crazy about it. So we continued that program. I, I got a list of the folks that wanted to participate, we had about 15 people, and we ended up going through an eight-week session with them. We had educational PowerPoints, handouts, and most of all, we had hands-on cooking opportunities and for the, these folks to have the chance to taste what they had cooked. The results were just phenomenal. There was increase in fruit and vegetable and seafood consumption. They said that they were eating less sugar, less fat, less salt, and they were incorporating a lot of the things that we discussed with this healthy Mediterranean way of eating, which has been shown to be one of the healthiest ways that we can eat. I also teach basic cooking skills to both youth and adults, and this enables them to be able to shop and prepare inexpensive and healthy meals for themselves and their families. And when they're able to do that, studies have shown that you're going to consume less fat, less salt, less calories, you're going to have more healthy options, and you're also going to have smaller portions. You know, when you go out to eat, you get a huge plate full of things. When you serve yourself at home, you serve less. So again, these are attaining goals to help our folks in Dare County to have better health. And I'm also a proponent of local foods and teach folks how to preserve their foods at home. I remember when I started in Cooperative Extension a good long time ago, we were told, "Don't teach that, that's old-timey stuff." But you know what? That's one of the main goals that we have, that's one of our flagship programs through Cooperative Extension now, is to teach people how to safely prepare their, their food at home, so that it can be shelf-stable for, for, you know, a good long time. We use only approved recipes that are going to be safe for, to be shelf-stable. I try to encourage my folks, "Don't look at Pinterest and Facebook and that kind of thing, because we want you to be healthy when you prepare these foods." So in your box, and this is prepared in a healthy way, you will find a jar of blueberry lemon jam. So indeed, you will. We hope you have a jamming good time, enjoying this the same way that me and the participants in one of the classes did as well when we prepared this for you. You're also going to find You're also going to find a cutting board, and you're going to find some measuring spoons here to keep you on the cutting edge of cooking in the kitchen. So thank you so much for giving us a few minutes of your time, and thank you for what you do to support Cooperative Extension and the things that we do in Family Consumer Sciences to try to keep folks healthier here on the Outer Banks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. And now I'm going to invite Ruth Perkins up. She's our 4-H agent. Ruth?
Good evening. As Tanya said, my name is Ruth Perkins, and I serve as the Dare County 4-H agent. So 4-H is America's largest youth development organization with roughly 6 million young people in America that participate. We work on empowering youth with the skills to lead for a lifetime, and over 200,000 of those youth are here in North Carolina alone. So in your box, you will find a candle that our 4-H club, the Chaos Cookers, I know they do not live up to that name, made to help fund their programs. This candle is a symbol of the bright future of our Dare County 4-H youth. There is also a 4-H branded tape measure that symbolizes the lengths that we go to to support the youth in our programs. So in 2022, we added two new 4-H clubs. This brings our total number of 4-H clubs up to three. We now have a sewing club, a cooking club, and a STEM club. Each one focuses on allowing you to pursue their interests through educational programming that helps them gain new life skills. Each club has participated in a service or outreach event of their choosing each year. The OBX Wave Riders, our STEM club, participated with, partnered with Roanoke Island Women's Club, the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, to pack Thanksgiving baskets for their Thanksgiving program. Our sewing club, the Needlers, participated in Art Rages and taught event attendees how to sew on buttons and how to embroider. And lastly, our cooking club, the Chaos Cookers, took a day to bake treats for the 911 Call Center to show their appreciation for all of the hard work that they do. All of these events include and involve the youth taking the lead, preparing these events, and working with their adult leaders to come together to make a positive impact in their community. 2022 was also the first year that we had youth participate in the state 4-H program called Project Record Books. In this program, youth compile all of their hard work for one year in an area that they are interested in. We had three youth participate in the categories of science and technology, animal science, and communication arts. They went on to win gold and silver in the science and technology category, as well as gold in the communication arts category. They won these awards at the district level, where they competed against 21, youth from 21 other counties. Additionally, we had a youth place fifth in the state out of hundreds of applicants with his photo in the nature's beauty category of the North Carolina State 4-H Photography Contest. Youth also won a trip to Electric Congress that is sponsored by Duke and Dominion Energy to Charlotte, North Carolina. These youth are gearing up to compete and participate in even more competitions at the district and state level in 2023 and beyond. Our newest program that we are very proud of is our partnership with Kitty Hawk Elementary on the Embryology Program. If you're unfamiliar with embryology, 4-H Embryology is hatching chicks in the classroom, usually with second or third grade. This is to teach them about life cycles and for us to give them a taste of agriculture. We began working towards this goal in the fall of 2022, and in May, we successfully hatched chicks in five second-grade classrooms at Kitty Hawk Elementary. This was our pilot program, so we hope to be able to offer this to any elementary school for the fall of 2024. In terms of numbers and impact, 2022 was a great year for us. We had six successful summer adventure programs where youth participated in fun and educational activities. With the start of our two new clubs, we now have roughly 40 club members who meet on a September-to-May basis. Two youth attended Electric Congress for the first time. Five youth attended the Northeast District Team Retreat for the first time. 11 youth attended 4-H Camp at the Eastern 4-H Center in Columbia, North Carolina. And lastly, 87 second graders participated in our Embryology Program. Thank you so much for your continued support of Extension and our Dare County 4-H youth.
Thank you, Ruth. Next is, we're going to talk about the Horticulture Program, and you'll see in your box a set of artistic note cards that represent a new program that I piloted in 2022. This is an example of a wonderful collaboration between Dare County Extension and Dare Arts. We were able to pilot this program twice for sessions open to the Master Gardeners only, and working together, we created a four-part series where Extension teaches the botany of the leaf and the flower, and then through Dare Arts, we've been able to connect with trained botanical artist Barbara Hamp, who instructs the participants on how to draw and sketch favorite spaces and flowers and plants in their gardens. This is such an important program because gardening provides exercise, stress relief, enjoyment, beauty, and satisfaction that continues to grow as the gardens do. Keeping a garden journal and recording information and observations about plants, weather, events, wildlife encounters maximizes the benefits. And a well-used garden journal is a powerful resource to any gardener. And I would say adding art to that journal just enhances the process of keeping a garden journal. And the note cards you'll see, you have a collection of three. These are examples of a few of the participants' work that they completed during the first two workshops. So we're really excited. It's astounding what everyone was able to create, but we're excited because this fall, we've opened this now to community members after we piloted it with the Master Gardeners twice. We're able to offer it to the community members, and we have a waitlist for our fall class, so we're really excited about that upcoming program. The seed packet in your box represents a program called Grow, Learn, Connect Plants, and this is an expansion of the Therapeutic Horticulture Program I started in 2021 through Dare County Extension. And this program has been developed to help promote health and healing by connecting, creating positive connections between plants and people. In 2022, I began growing this project, and I applied for a grant through the Outer Banks Community Foundation, which has allowed us to expand and serve other individuals who can benefit from the healing power of plants. The seeds represent one workshop that featured or worked with Monarch Beach Club of Dare County. They came to the Extension office over five times in the winter and spring and planted over 350 seed starts. They filled the pots, they wrote the tags, they watered them in, and then we grew the plants out, and they were all vegetable starts. And so by the end of, or early, end of spring, early summer, we had about 300 plants to pass out to the community at various outreach events such as Kids Fest and Dare Days. So it just shows the full circle cycle of Monarch working as volunteers, and then we grow and are able to promote local food and growing your own food in the community. So we're really excited that we got the grant. That's enabled us to grow the program a little bit more to reach other organizations that can benefit from that. I also have a great team of Master Gardener volunteers who help with program planning and delivery. And speaking of volunteers, who, speaking of our volunteers, I'm going to invite Linda Foster up. She's our Dare Master Gardener Extension Association President, and she's going to share with you about the work that the Master Gardeners accomplished in 2022. Linda?
So I am Linda Foster. I'm the current president of our association. I said this was a treasure chest. So right now, I'd like for you to find the little green package. And under this green shirt, please open it up. You will find a compact, united, flexible, accommodating group. We're handy, and we will get to the point. Have a annoying problem? By using this versatile device, we will nip it in the bud. This cooperative group can skillfully answer plant questions. We're easily accessible, resilient, and adapt to most environments. Let's define these words. Handy. Master Gardeners repaired our own irrigation system. Accommodating, and by using community outreach in Doughty Park for Dare Days, for Art Rages, we met with children and adults. Get to the point. Through in-person and Zoom sessions, last year, Master Gardeners reached over 4,000 people, providing education on specific topics. Nip it in the bud. We spread eight yards of mulch. We created a wetlands area that's new and expanded our Outer Banks Arboretum and Teaching Garden. Plant questions. In 2022, Master Gardeners answered 247 plant and gardening questions for the public and provided them with research-based answers. We also shared 111 soil kits. Adapt to most environments. Regardless of the weather, Master Gardeners show up. Recently, in May, the Coastal Gardening Festival started in the pouring down rain, but we were there, and 3,000 people came to visit our festival. This event showcased the work of Dare County Master Gardeners and raises funds to help support our program and our work in the community. So you can see, our Dare Master Gardener volunteers are a cooperative group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. That was great.
That elementary school teacher.
Did you come up with all that on your own?
I did. I kept on sending it to her.
I'm like, oh, yeah, that's great, that's great.
Pretty good talent there.
So as you can see, our volunteers help make our work shine. And this last year, they dedicated over 6,900 hours of volunteer time to outreach and education. So now, there is a formula we use at the state level. We plug in these numbers, and that total, if we were to write a paycheck to our volunteers, it would equal over $206,776. Now, this number is astounding because some of our volunteer programs rival that across the state within the Extension system and communities that have, and counties that have over a million people or a million residents. And we sit here just over 37,000 residents, and we pull in this kind of volunteer power. It's really incredible what our volunteers do, and so we're just really proud of those numbers. I think every year, we try to beat that number a little bit, and we continue to do so. We're just really thrilled about that. Another component of our success in our programming is our fostering the relationships between our community partners. They are like the backbone of our program. So number one, they help us expand our reach across the community. They have connections we might not have yet met or known, so we are able to engage with their connections when we get to work with new partners. Number two, they provide support and guidance for our programming efforts. We have a newly-formed advisory council, and many of the organizations who are our partners have representatives that serve on our advisory councils. So it's really exciting to learn of the work that they're doing and seeing how Extension can integrate in with their efforts in the community. And number three, they assist with making a positive impact on our community. And Dare County, Chairman of the Board, Chairman Woodard, and Commissioners, I just want to thank you for being such a great partner in our work that we do. Certainly, we appreciate the financial support, but it goes way beyond that. The partnership between the departments that are within the county, such as Dorothy Hester and her team, helping promote out our programs and events and our workshops, the willingness of many of the other departments that share their space with us, such as the Baum Center, the Virginia Tillot Center, the Youth Center, the Fessident Center. They really work to share our space for our meetings. We have limited space at our office, so we just really appreciate that flexibility, and they're generous with their space. We also have a great collaboration with the Dare County Library System. They partner with the Master Gardeners a lot throughout the year. They have started a seed library, and then our Master Gardeners do the Library Garden Series, which is one of our top programs throughout the year, and they work tirelessly to make that happen and really share out the information about it. And also, our grounds and building maintenance teams, we appreciate their effort to keep our building improvements going. Right now, we're under construction. They're scaffolding, so we're really happy about that. They're getting some of the soffits fixed, so we're, you know, we just really appreciate them showing up when we need them to show up. So it's just so great to work within a community that really supports and cheerleads our work. To wrap this presentation, we have a short two-minute video, I think, that just captures a snapshot of some of the programs that we did in 2022, so. So again, we thank you. We really appreciate the support and the guidance necessary for us to make such great impacts in the community. Thank you very much. I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Tanya, I don't have a question, but I just want to say what great work you folks do. It's unbelievable, all the things that you do, and I'm happy that our board is very supportive of that. And thank you for this.
You're welcome.
I can't wait to give that tool to my wife so she can use that in the garden. And with my sweet tooth, I can't wait to taste that.
Oh, yeah. It's delicious, so enjoy, and thank you very much. Again, we appreciate everything you all do for us. It's a pleasure.
Thanks, Tanya. First rate, all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a great team, I must say.
Yes.
Thank you.
County manager, now you can go to item seven.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution advocating increased funding to help landowners improve their property and reduce the nutrient loading in NC coastal waters. And Charlie Sanders, our soil water conservationist, is here for that.
Charlie, good evening.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time this evening. I'll try to keep it brief.
Gotcha.
So as he said, I'm Charlie Sanders. I'm the community conservationist for Dare County Soil and Water. Just some quick background. The state every year funds several cost-share programs that we use to help stem erosion. Most of them are agriculture-centric, and we all know there's not a whole lot of agriculture in Dare County, but there is one particular program that we use a lot. We call it C cap. It's the Community Conservation Assistance Program. And we use it to help do 75% cost shares of various BNP's, various practices to help stem erosion. Things like marshills to help keep shoreline from eroding away, rain gardens to keep effluent from pouring into the sands, and things such as that. The state operates under a... Usually, we get about 50.
Well, I see 50 in the letter for two projects.
Yeah. And that's because there's a limited amount of funds that has to be spread about the entire state. We have to, there's a limited amount we can get. Dare County is one of three counties that actually maxes ours out every year, us, New Hanover, and, my gosh.
Mecklenburg?
No, Buncombe.
Buncombe.
Ashville is the other one. So we're the only ones that max out C cap. Now, most rest of them do more with the agriculture program. But we're the only ones that have maxed out C cap. Carteret's another one, excuse me.
So you have this resolution you'd like us to consider this evening, right?
Yes, sir.
In the sake of time, I don't think you want me to read all this.
No, I don't want you to, but I think the board is in their packet, they've had an opportunity to read it. So I would entertain a motion from the board if so.
Motion to adopt.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross and Bateman. So any further discussion? Any questions of Charlie? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Charlie, for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, items eight and nine are from Health and Human Services, and she and her team will make the presentation for each of those.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. What I want to present to you tonight, and you should have this in your packet also too, is the project ordinance amendment, the budget for the opioid settlement funds for fiscal year 24. And then we have this budget and then the resolution that goes along with it states the strategies that are going to be used for these opioid settlement funds for the upcoming year. Would you like me to read those to you? Or?
With respect to the resolution?
Yes.
Once again, it's rather lengthy and I think the board got this packet and they've reviewed it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list of from two items where you're assigning funding substantial increases in court professional services, supplies, et cetera.
The first column, the from column, is actually fiscal year 23, which we just wrapped up that one on June 30th.
Right.
Then if you go all the way to the right, where it says increase in the third column, that actually is fiscal year 24, which is what we are budgeting starting July 1. The two column, which is in the middle, is the total so far of both those years.
Gotcha. That's very helpful. Thank you, Roxanna.
Roxanna, point out the strategies, just in general.
So we have seven strategies, six strategies rather, and they run from recovery support services, which funds the post overdose response coordinator. The evidence-based addiction treatment is another strategy. Those are funds that will be awarded to help with tuition and entrance fees at Changing Tides Addiction Center and Dare Challenge. We have two criminal justice diversion strategies. The reason we have two, one is for recovery court and the other one is Dare County Detention Center. So those funds are separated out. Naloxone distribution, which we increased that significantly this year because of the response that we've had over the past year to meet the need with that. And that includes naloxone and fentanyl and xylazine test strips to the community. And then we also have some funds that were allocated for addressing social determinants of health, transportation needs, clothing, entrance fees to like Oxford houses, healthcare, those types of things that that population frequently needs. And those are the strategies for this upcoming budget for fiscal year 24.
Thanks, Roxanna.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is the board prepared to adopt a grant ordinance amendment and the resolution?
Move to approve.
Pardon?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Roxanna.
Thank you.
Sheila, how are you this evening?
I am well, thank you. I hope you are.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. We are pleased to be with you this evening. The next item on the agenda is an overview of Medicaid expansion. We've delayed this several months coming to present to you because we were hoping that maybe we'd be coming around adoption time or implementation time. But as you'll hear in a few minutes, we still don't know when that will be, but we're in the midst of preparing for that. I'm just going to do a few opening slides and then turn the bulk of the presentation over to Chuck. But before I do, I'd like to give kudos to Chuck. He has been steadfast in his goodness, research deliberation intent on following this and making sure Dare County is prepared when we do eventually start Medicaid transformation. Not only has he been in this role for Dare County, but he's also been in this role for the state as he has served as the chair of the association or the director of the Association of Social Services Directors at the state level over the past year. So appreciate all of your hard work, not just for the state, but certainly it's ensuring that we're as prepared as we can be as we embark on Medicaid expansion. So the first, I think, we'll be advancing. Here we go. The first slide here is a map showing an overview of Medicaid expansion states. The dark blue states are those who have adopted and implemented the Medicaid expansion. The light blue, or the one state there, is identified as adopted but not yet implemented. And the 11 orange states are those who have not adopted. You might question why Dare County is not in the blue, and that really, I think I can probably, well, wait, I have another slide on that. But that's because we don't have our date of implementation. So I think we're just still in that orange category until we get a little bit closer and a little bit further along. And actually, we've seen different maps that have different colors. But as you can see, the majority of states have moved forward with the expansion. On our introduction slide, this was the work of House Bill 76. It's called NC Health Works, but really, we know it as Medicaid Expansion. The benefit of expansion, we're going to talk in most detail tonight about the impact to Dare County. But before we get into that, we just wanted to highlight why this is a good thing for the county and for individuals. Social services and public health have been supporters of expansion for North Carolina Medicaid for years. And really, it's because what it can do to enhance the lives of many in our community who struggle with unmet needs. The biggest thing is it will expand access to healthcare. And as part of that expansion, it gets people connected to preventative services and early intervention. And studies certainly show that by getting good preventative health and early interventions, if you have disease states, your long-term health is going to be much better and the costs are going to be down. This also, by expanding Medicaid, will enable more people to have mental health and substance abuse treatment who currently struggle with trying to find a payer for those services. So a little bit of the timeline, you all are familiar. This has been in and out of legislation for many years, but fortunately, this year on February 23rd, or excuse me, February 16th, the House passed the legislation to expand Medicaid. And then the Senate passed the same legislation on March 15th, and it was signed by the governor on March 27th. But it still leaves the big thing about implementation. And part of that is because there's specific language in the legislation about implementation that ultimately ties this to approving the state budget. And there's a really good reason for that. It's because we need the money that's in the budget to be able to truly afford this expansion because it will take an increase in manpower and resources across the state. So the provision in the act is that if the Appropriations Act for 2324 is not approved by June 30th of 2024, then the NC Health Works expires, meaning that we would not be implementing Medicaid expansion. We certainly do not expect that to be the case, but unfortunately, until that happens, we can't put, until we have the approved budget, we cannot, we have to start with our implementation plans, but the individuals won't be able to enroll and start receiving the expanded benefits or the expanded enrollment until we are able to reach that accomplishment, which hopefully, we've heard, I think there was an article last week that August, maybe, maybe September, so we're watching that closely. And Chuck is going to walk through now the funding for Health Works and then specifically also get into the impact for Dare County.
Thank you, Sheila. Funding for NC Health Works comes 90% from the federal government and 10% from the state. And so it is written in the legislation that if for some reason that percentage goes down, then North Carolina will step out of Medicaid expansion.
Chuck?
Yes, sir.
What's the total estimated cost? Not just the state's portion, the total?
I will have to get that number for you. I don't know.
It's about 400,000 additional people added, Sheila?
600,000.
600,000? I thought I'd seen 400,000. So the 600,000 folks, we have no idea.
On the additional cost?
Yeah.
I do not have that figure.
$1,000 a person would be, what, 6 billion?
60 million. My math isn't that good, but I...
Sure it is, Chuck. Come on, you're being modest.
It's, I don't have an idea of what we currently spend and what the additional cost would be, but I do know the federal government covered 90% of that.
Yeah, it wouldn't. It would be 600 million additional. And if it's 2,000 a person, it would be 1.2 billion. 5,000 would be 3 billion. I'm just wondering, I mean, pretty soon, a billion here, a billion there, you're talking real money. I'm wondering how much has been contemplated in terms of the cost. Now, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'd just like to know how much the fund is going to be. Maybe you guys could let us know next time.
Okay. I will do some research on that.
Thank you.
So in North Carolina, it's up to the local social services departments to be able to determine eligibility for Medicaid. So we have a staff who does this on a daily basis for all individuals who are applying for Medicaid. And we also have to recertify individuals every year. We also have to be able to respond to any changes in income or changes in address as the year goes on. Medicaid is not just one program. There's actually 17 different Medicaid programs and Medicaid expansion will be an eighth. Each program has their own eligibility criteria, income guidelines, and unfortunately, on a weekly basis, something in one of those programs changes, one of the rules that the workers have to adjust to. Currently in North Carolina, the application process is a manual process for the workers. They gather the information, they enter it into a computer system, it tells them whether or not they're eligible, but it's all manual to get to that point. One of the fortunate things in NC Health Works is funding to the counties for the administrative cost of rolling out Medicaid expansion. This year, counties can expect to receive about $20 million. Next year, it's about $29 million. Dare County has already received some funds to start up Medicaid expansion, meaning to hire people, office space, which we already have, computers, scanners. We estimate, based on what we've received so far from the state, that we will receive $7,776 a month from the state to help cover the administrative cost. For us, that'll pretty much go towards covering the county share of salaries for staff that will be hired in order for Medicaid expansion to happen in Dare County.
So that would be just the salaries?
A portion of the salaries, yes.
A portion of the salary. So we would have to cover what's left over the salary plus the benefits?
All of that's covered by that money. It's all, when we look at, when we looked at the projection, we took salary and benefits, we added them all together, and we receive 75% reimbursement from the federal government for those positions. And then the remainder is, the 25% is the county share. And then if there's anybody else connected with Medicaid that does work, we get a portion of their salary and benefits from the federal government and the county shares, the remaining.
That's what I was getting at, the 25% for these new employees has to be covered by our budget.
Correct. And this 7,776 will cover those positions, the county share for those positions going forward.
Gotcha.
So in those cases, it's not new money, fortunately? Like, we're not asking for additional money?
No, 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 no. I'm not saying that. But if we hire new people, because we currently don't have people in those positions, so we're going to hire new people.
Right.
So 25% of that hire comes out of our budget.
There's a state hold harmless for part of that. And so in a minute, I'll talk to you about that, those positions.
Okay.
But the state hold harmless covers the county share of those positions for, at least for the first year. And then we'll talk about the second year in a second.
So what does NC Health Works mean for Dare County? Currently, there are approximately 7,000 individuals in Dare County that are on Medicaid. That's about 19% of the Dare County population. The estimate from the Department of Health Benefit.
7,000 in March of '23 are on Medicaid?
Yes.
And what percent is that again?
About 19% of the county.
Got it. Okay.
Based on the projections from the Department of Health Benefits from North Carolina, they estimate about another 1,800 individuals would be added to Medicaid through Medicaid expansion. Approximately 863 of those individuals are currently receiving what they call family planning. And those individuals would roll from what they're receiving in Medicaid over into Medicaid expansion. So we would not have to touch any applications or anything like that. They would automatically roll over so that 1,843, while it's there, it may be about 800 people less. So we'd be talking about actually having to do applications for about 1,000 new individuals. The Kaiser Foundation estimates for North Carolina estimates that of the eligible individuals for Medicaid expansion, 77% of those individuals are childless adults. Nearly half of those are females.
And so, in a minute, I'll talk to you about that, those positions.
Okay.
But the, the state hold harmless covers the county share of those positions for, at least for the first year, and then we'll talk about the second year in a second.
So, what does NC Health Works mean for Dare County? Currently, there are approximately 7,000 individuals in Dare County that are on Medicaid. That's about 19% of the Dare County population. The estimate from the Department of Health Benefit.
7,000 in March of '23 are on Medicaid?
Yes.
And what percent is that again?
About 19% of the county.
Got it, okay.
Based on the projections from the Department of Health Benefits from North Carolina, they estimate about another 1,800 individuals would be added to Medicaid through Medicaid expansion. Approximately 863 of those individuals are currently receiving what they call family planning, and those individuals would roll from what they're receiving in Medicaid over into Medicaid expansion. So, we would not have to touch tho, any applications or anything like that. They would automatically roll over, so that 1,843, while it's there, it may be about 800 people less. So, we'd be talking about actually having to do applications for about 1,000 new individuals. The Kaiser Foundation estimates for North Carolina estimates that of the eligible individuals for Medicaid expansion, 77% of those individuals are childless adults. Nearly half of those are females. Most are in the age range of 25 to 54, and most are working. For Medicaid expansion, the eligibility age is from 18 to 64, and you have to be at less than 138% of the federal poverty level. For an individual, that's about $20,000. For a family of three, it's about $33,000. Sometimes I scratch my head and I'm wondering how many people in Dare County will fit into that. And when you look at a lot of the individuals who are in our service industry, they may actually qualify for Medicaid expansion. There are a lot of other individuals out there, I believe, who are working that maybe work only in the summertime and not during the wintertime. When you sort out their income, they would be eligible for Medicaid expansion as well. So, where are we right now? We, at this time, first of all, I do want to thank you, in June, you approved for us to hire three additional income maintenance workers to start this process of rolling into Medicaid expansion, so that we have individuals that would be able to process these applications. In an ideal world, we would be looking at the need for five additional caseworkers. At this point, we want to start with three. There are some variables that we don't have any idea on how they will impact Medicaid expansion and applications going forward, so, but three will get us going. As I said, Medicaid, Medicaid is a manual process. Their applications have to be filled out and they have to be processed. There is hope from the state that they will have an automated process to process some of these applications. If an individual files through EPAS and provides all of their pay stubs and all of their information, that would go through an automatic process to be approved. That has, there's still an implementation at the state level and has not been tested yet, and with my knowledge of the system, I hold little faith that that will work the first time through. So, we are waiting on that. The other way that may happen is the, in NC Health Works, when the legislation passed, the General Assembly authorized for the state to pursue the federal marketplace for processing applications. That's currently done with the Affordable Care Act. The rules have to be written for that, and it would be a couple of months after Medicaid expansion starts when individuals could go through the federal marketplace to apply and have their applications automatically processed. So, we are hopeful that that will happen in time to reduce the workload on the number of workers that would be needed. So, we were left with about 1,000 applications, and I feel with our current, our current staff that we can start the process with the three workers.
Chuck?
Yes, sir.
In our conversations, didn't you indicate that, that 1,800 people may be an overestimate for Dare County, which would mitigate this yet some more?
It, it's quite possible. These are, these estimates are two years old, and they've been holding steadfast that these are the estimates. So, we, we don't know.
But we think.
We don't know. The other two positions that would be needed for Medicaid expansion are a supervisor. Currently, we have a supervisor who's running a unit, has 15 staff. Adding three more to that unit would overwhelm the supervisor, so I would, I need to be able to change our organization a little bit and reduce the size of those units so that we can, we are more effective. The other critical position that would be beneficial as part of Medicaid expansion is a quality control person. We currently have a caseworker who does quality control within our agency. They, they go through and they second-party review Medicaid applications. Medicaid, Medicaid at the local level, we are subject to five audits a year from the state. We're currently undergoing what's known as the Rita Audit, which is a 10-month audit, where we're audited every month. And the audits come in to make sure that those who qualify for Medicaid are actually receiving the benefits, and those who are, do not qualify, do not receive the benefits. This is very strenuous on the staff. They are looking for checkboxes, they are making sure pieces of paper get sent out. So, it's helpful to have another set of eyes look at these applications. The other thing that our quality control individual does right now is when we have suspected high-dollar cases, we do a quality control review before we approve those cases. So, if we suspect that there's going to be a high medical cost or long-term care, we will do a review before we hit approval, because what happens when a finding is made at an audit, the county is responsible for paying those dollars back. And if you can imagine the cost for a long-term care over 12 months, or cancer, or heart surgery, where we've made a mistake and have to pay those back, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we want to minimize those risks to the county. Last year, we were able to review 518 cases, do second-party reviews on those. Adding another individual would get us to about a fifth of the, about, sorry, again, my math is not great. Get us to about a seventh of the cases that we would be reviewing on an annual basis to make sure that people are receiving Medicaid and that they're eligible for it. When you look at what we're requesting and you look at the funding that we would be receiving as part of the NC Health Works, the difference to the county would be about $31,000 a year. The agency, we have looked at our budget, and based on our current budget, we would be able to cover that cost for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then, going forward, we would need to place a request for that. Any questions?
Any questions, Chuck?
So, the, the request before you all, are you, are you finished?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, the request before you all, is this, there's one other I need to add to it that's kind of unrelated, but it's part of Health and Human Services, so while we're here. This position, that, these three positions that he's talking about, we believe will cover us, we're going to be covered in the first year, that's what I was getting to you with Commissioner House. In the second year is where we have potentially a problem if their projections hold true, if, if the numbers come in lower or whatever, then that could, could change, but that's where we are. If they come in higher, it may be that in the next year or the following year, that we would have to add additional people based on whatever the demand load is, and, and those would be costs that we'd have to cover as well in those out years, correct?
Correct.
So, that's where we are, that's the, the reality of, of what's going on. What we need tonight is to approve those three positions, so that we can be prepared when this all comes into being. You know, if they continue to linger and then, let's say, the budget doesn't get adopted until September, our implementation date will be even later, and, you know, we may not need the people until later than this, which then reduces that cost. We're really kind of guessing.
So, this item under Health and Human Services, Medicaid expansion update presentation provides an update on the potential impact. The board action under this agenda item is none.
Correct.
So, what's changed? We're going to make a decision for 2024?
No. What changed is Chuck and Sheila came to me and asked me what I, on my agenda, request these positions, this, and this 31,000 for the-
But it's two, not three.
It's three income maintenance caseworkers, one quality control caseworker, and one supervisor.
And at the last meeting, you all authorized the first three, so-
The first three, yeah.
So, for tonight, for this, and we're probably thinking three for DHHS, because the other one that we need to talk about, but it's, the, the additional request is specifically for the quality control caseworker, which is basically the one doing the audits, and then the supervisor.
Right, that's the two.
The two, correct.
Right.
So, and, and so, that's out of this presentation. Unrelated to that is another employment issue that I have to get permission from that's budget-neutral. That was the third position that has nothing to do with that. So, I can either wait until my agenda, so we don't get confused, or-
I'm getting confused, I apologize.
So, right now, where we are, for us to go forward and to be prepared for the Medicaid expansion, we need to add a quality control caseworker and one supervisor for $31,000 in this year that's not currently in our budget.
Two positions.
But may I add, we're not actually asking for any money for this year.
Right.
And, right.
For 2024, Chuck's able to cover that in his budget, but after this year, for 25 and beyond, we don't have that.
Why are we doing it now, then, since we would approve budget next year?
Because I can't add positions without your posi, your permission. To add these positions even at zero cost, you have to authorize us to do that.
And unfortunately, we didn't have the information when you all adopted the budget in June for this.
And, and I'm uncomfortable creating an obligation for you in an out-budget year that you didn't know about, and so you're creating another obligation.
It's a tick, Tom, I'm with you.
So, those are the two reasons why it's before you now.
I was pleasure-
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, I, I think in your description, Chuck, was the, without a doubt, you would, it would be foolhardy to go into Medicaid expansion at any level without a quality control caseworker. I, I just, that, that's insurance, I mean, for the county. That, that's, that's basically whatever their salary is, you're buying an insurance policy.
Well, if we catch one error, we've covered this cost.
It's paid, oh, exactly, exactly.
Now, yeah, another, other question I have is, one reason that legislation was put in, that if the federal government backs any part of theirs out, because it's happened in other states, that North Carolina would then opt out of it?
Yeah.
What happens to these positions?
Through attrition, they would be eliminated.
Yeah. But we still have to finance all of it until one of them decided to quit.
That would be a decision we'd have to make.
Yeah, it's a decision we have to make.
As with other, if programs are eliminated in health, I mean, we just did it this year when the grant's done in the budget.
Right.
Now, we had the opportunity to move those people to a different department, but absent having that ability, their positions would have been eliminated.
Hey, what's the pleasure of the board?
Just so I'm clear again, we're going to authorize, if we do, two, not three.
Two.
We kept hearing three earlier.
I, I confuse it by adding the other one, but yes, two.
Gotcha, two, okay. All right, I'm with you.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll give it to you down at its end.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
So, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman as well as Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
I'll just offer, Chuck, you don't need to research, I did some research here while we were talking. It will add, based on North Carolina's average enrollee cost, the expansion will be 3.5 billion in total additional cost, of which the North Carolina share will be 350 million. And I listened to Kay and Sue go on at length with an impassioned plea for approximately 4.5% of that amount for the senior Tar Heel legislation. I'm just kind of keeping the numbers in context, because when they get that big, they kind of just roll over you, and they're extraordinarily large. Okay. That's all I have.
Motion on the floor, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you for that thorough investigation.
Thank you.
Chuck, I got a question, real quick. So, we have a population down here in the service industry that you just talked about a while ago, that they're undocumented, they've been here probably 15, some up to 20 years, buying cars, owning houses.
Building houses.
Building houses. This still leaves them out.
They have to be able to prove citizenship.
That's kind of screwed up. I mean, I understand, and, and, and I get it, and everything, but, you know, for someone to be down here and work this long and do what they do in their, in their lives, and still not be able to take care of something like this, or take advantage of it, it's really sad. There's a lot of them down here, too. Hardworking, good people.
Yes, sir.
Yep, it's a work in progress. It's not going to be fixed overnight, the whole immigration.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while I've got Sheila here, can we take care of this other?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Is that something you were going to cover under your?
I was, but she's here to answer questions. So, in the Health Department, we have a existing part-time physician and existing part-time advanced practice provider. We're having a really hard time with the physician position, finding anybody to do that. And so, what's being proposed to accomplish the same goals is to hire a full-time certified nurse, midwife, advanced practice practitioner by eliminating those two part-time positions and making it into one position that I just described at a budget-neutral cost. Ordinarily, I would just do that, but again, because I'm creating a position that doesn't now exist, I have to have your authority to do that.
Why, what makes us think we're going to get a candidate if we can't get a candidate for the other?
So, we actually, we, the current advanced practitioner is a part, the part-time, she announced her retirement, and we posted for that position. And then, later learned that the part-time physician would also be retiring. And we started accepting applications for the part-time, and discussions with one of them, they would be interested in full-time, maybe, that may or may not work out. But I think the likelihood of being able to, to hire a, a full-time, either certified nurse, midwife, or advanced-level practitioner that does not have to be an MD, because they're working in public health, I think we're going to have a greater likelihood of hiring that full-time. And by hav, having just one person instead of the two part-time, we're going to actually have more coverage than we currently do. And fortunately, it would not cost any more because of the part-time MD salary that we have budgeted, and the part-time, basically, an advanced-level practitioner, just going to the full-time advanced-level practitioner, it's revenue-neutral.
Okay.
Or expense-neutral.
Cool.
So, I need your permission to do that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman and Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those, those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheila.
Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda, and this is, concerns the relocation of some graves at the Dare County Regional Airport. Commissioner Overman is our representative on the airport authority. Stacy's here as well to answer questions, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Overman.
Thank you, Bobby. We'll have to raise this up in just a minute. Bobby mentioned that this is regarding relocation of graves at Dare County Airport. We have some, some graves, a, a little small gray site out there that has about seven, we think, of, of remains that are interred there. There are about four of them that belong to one family, and the others are basically unknown. Stacy will go into some detail about that, and he has some photographs of the, of the area that we're talking about, but it's in an area that is, has a lot of traffic through it. And we're, we're looking at UPS, FedEx planes coming in and out of there, and they may, may show them one of the photographs, I don't know. But basically, it's a safety issue, and we're looking at trying to, at, at this point in time with, with the, the things we're doing at the airport, to try to take care of some things that probably should have been done a long time ago. But Stacy will go into more detail, and this is our young man here, is our attorney that's working with us through the process, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you for having me. This is Johnny Hallow, he is our airport attorney, and I'm Stacy, I'm the director out here at the airport. And while he touched on just about everything, I was going to say, this is a grave that's right in the middle of our apron that's been, needed to be moved for, well, the airport's been there for 80 years.
Excuse me, can we get that on our screen?
Yeah, I can't see anything either.
We, we've got, we've got the last presentation on here. Can we get that pulled up, Matt?
It was, yeah, okay. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
We built the entire apron around those things.
The military did it.
Yeah, military.
So, we can blame them.
How long's it been there?
80 years.
Yeah.
Excuse me, sorry.
That's a 50 by 80. There, there's, there's the graves right there. Some of those are legible, some aren't, but they've been there, some of them since before 1900.
And so, the apron's actually over top of one of them.
It sure is, okay.
Yeah, one of them sticks just outside there, that, yeah, that's my plane there, I was getting ready to get on.
Okay. I know whose plane that is. Sorry, you sold it, aren't you?
But there's a, you can see there where he's parked, and they've just got to go around that little area there, and it doesn't take much for a, that's a sixty-million-dollar aircraft right there, so if he makes a hard right turn, then just to probably fix a tire there would be two or three hundred thousand dollars.
And if he can afford sixty, he can afford two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yep. So I'm going to turn Johnny loose on this, and he's going to tell you how far along we are on it, as of now.
So, good evening, everyone, my name's Johnny Hallow, I'm an attorney with Hornthal Riley Ellis and Mayland. I work primarily out of our Elizabeth City office, but also work out of the Naxet office a good bit as well with Robert Hobbs. This is a statutory process, it's governed by Chapter 65, Part IV of our general statutes. There are a number of steps that are involved in this process, and the first one was actually taken care of during the May DCAA meeting. The board adopted a resolution basically petitioning you all and certifying that the removal of these graves is necessary for the airport to perform its governmental functions. So we have a resolution before we deny, asking you to, first of all, allow us to commence the project, and then, second of all, broadly allow us to take any reasonable steps necessary to complete the project. And just kind of briefly, what the project is going to involve is, first of all, we've got to hire a research firm to perform some archaeological and genealogical research on the graves. They're also going to have to have the capability to perform ground-penetrating radar, which if you've ever seen a baseball field or a football field be chalked, you can kind of imagine somebody that walks along and chokes the field. They're going to do that within the entire area of the graveyard. We know of seven graves, there could potentially be others, and there's about a twenty-to-thirty-foot parameter outside of the fence they also want to scan for any other potential graves that could have been covered. So that's the first step, is performing that research and doing some historical research on the family as well. Before any disinterment or reinterment happens, we have to provide notice. By law, we have to give thirty days at least written notice to the families. We also have to publish notice of the disinterment in the newspaper. We would also have to hire a contractor to help remove the top layer of soil, and a licensed funeral director to help us with the disinterment and reinterment process. And I believe the reinterment, we're thinking about doing at the Roanoke Island Memorial Gardens Cemetery, which is in close proximity. So, it should be a pretty smooth process, but the first step was having the DCAA board adopt a resolution. Now we just need to have your permission to move forward with it.
One other thing, since this is a historical sort of situation, and we do have four of those interments that are with a family, the intent is to, at the Memorial Gardens, is to basically, if at all possible, lay this out the same way that it's, that it's, is right now at the airport. That is a possibility to do, and if that is something that a family would prefer, then certainly we can, we can make the geometry of it.
What was the catalyst that ignited this effort in 2023?
Expansion of the airport, probably. We've talked about.
Well, it's traffic, but we've got a lot more traffic out there.
Expansion. I'm just curious, it's been sitting there for eighty years.
Well, they're trying to expand.
Everybody that lands there, when they walk in, that's the first question we get. What is that white picket fence doing out there on the apron?
Yeah, I can imagine the question.
Has anybody contacted the family? Or do they know who the family is?
Yeah.
Weskett in it.
Weskett family.
Have they reached out at all? I mean, this is not, this is not anything new. I knew about this over a year ago, that they were there, or that we were working to this moment.
We've worked with the legacy group.
Briefly with the legacy group, but we haven't, to my knowledge, unless you have, we haven't provided any formal notice at this point because we just haven't gotten far enough along in that process to do so. Again, we are required to provide them with notice under the general statutes, at least thirty days in advance of removing anything.
And we wouldn't, if we weren't moving them, we wouldn't be reaching out to them, so.
Right.
Kind of got to get this done before we can.
Is there such a part of the process?
This is the second step in the process before they get to the notification part.
Right.
They did their resolution, we've got to do our resolution to give them the county authority, and then they have to follow all the other statutory requirements, which include that notification.
Who's providing the funding to do all this?
Trying to get the state on board with that, because it's happening in a lot of different areas, not just on airports, but all throughout the state. So there's, we had two guys that come out from the state, and they said that they would try to, actually, the state possibly will take care of all of it, now, we don't know that yet.
But ultimately, it's the airport authorities, it's not ours.
No, I know, I understand that, but I didn't know.
And there could also be funding through Secretary of State, because graveyard is under Secretary of State.
Well, developers, this is, it might not be an apples-to-apples, but developers do this regularly, because we went through an own family with some property we inherited, and the developers paid for reinterment. They paid for stones and everything. And on that note, is the airport authority in the mix, or is anybody in the mix? For new stones, grave stones? If they're going to be reinterred over, if the moon and stars line up, and we do this over Roanoke Island Memorial Gardens, are there going to be new stones, or are we just taking whatever ID stones?
I would think we would take what's there now, but that's, that's out of.
That's just curious.
Yeah. But we do own the cemetery there, so that's some cost that we would not be taking care of.
It's not a deal breaker for me.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make that motion.
All right, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded, pardon?
I think there are actually two resolutions.
Yeah. There's two resolutions, correct. And we're talking about both of them, Commissioner Couch has made the motion, and Commissioner House has seconded.
Where's two? I've only read one.
There's two in the file, one is their resolution.
One is their resolution, Vice Chairman, the other one's ours. It's only one resolution.
We're only voting on ours.
Yeah, we're only voting on ours. All right, those, any further questions? Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jim, you with us?
Yes, I said aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, thank you.
Yep.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, item 11 is a revision to our travel policy, let Dave Clausen make that presentation.
Good evening, Dave.
Thank, good evening. Just a quick revision, years ago when we first started using purchasing cards, we allowed eight department heads, named department heads, to use them for certain travel. Now with the experience we've had with cards and our internal audit function, which Commissioner Ross hears about every internal audit committee meeting, or the audit committee meeting of the board, we don't, we haven't had any major issues or problems, and we look at every, every cardholder gets audited at least four times a year. And with those in place, we're a lot more comfortable making the recommendation that we expand the list of who can use the purchasing cards for travel. And it'll basically be naming every department head to be eligible to use it for hotel cost. And that's going to take the list from around, let's see, we're going to go from eight to twenty-five that's eligible to do that. And we estimate we're going to eliminate fifteen to twenty travel advances a year.
So, under the current system, those that can't use a card, if the tax person wants to go to the conference in Asheville, they have to ask us to advance them money, there's a form they fill out, and we give them cash, money, a check to do that. They go to, on their trip, when they come back, they file another document that says how much they actually spent. If they spent less than what we gave them, they give it back. If it costs more than what they estimated, we have to fill that out and give them some more money. This eliminates all of that bureaucracy and paperwork, and allows them simply to put it on a card like we do, you would do, or I would do. And we have all the audit functions in place to make sure nobody can abuse that, so that's the purpose of this.
So we're increasing, for what's highlighted in the yellow?
Yes. What's highlighted in the yellow is what's current, not in the blue is what's increasing.
Gotcha.
Right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry. There's a motion on the floor then, by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Item 12 is a request for participation in the Rodanthe Beach Nurishment feasibility study. As you know, we've been talking about beach nourishment in Rodanthe for a while. We had a big meeting back in February, where, I'm saying, in January, where we made a presentation to the community down there, told them the situation of our funds, and told them that we weren't in a position to fund it, but that they needed to begin looking for funding sources. As a result of that, Congressman Murphy has begun a process to start a feasibility study there by the Corps of Engineers. To do that Corps of Engineers study, they have to have a commitment from a local government entity to, or someone to pay for a cost share of fifty percent of that cost. If this feasibility study goes all the way to the end and the design stage, then they're estimating the cost to be about three million dollars, which would mean our cost share would be about a million and a half dollars. It's an incremental process, so, for example, they have to do a cost-benefit analysis. If they did that cost-benefit analysis and found that it didn't meet the core formula for doing a beach nourishment project, then the project would end, and all we would owe is half the cost of that economic number that they came up with this study. If that, if it met that criteria, then it would move to the next criteria, do they have enough sand, and so on. And each process down the road, if at any point it got to where they couldn't do it, then the process would stop, and we would only owe for what work had been done up to that point. When it got to the end, if it became feasible, then we would owe for all of that work, whether it became feasible or not, if they get to the last step, then we would owe half of the cost to have gotten to that step. If it's deemed feasible at that point, then they have to start the process to get the money. They have to get into WERDA and get that money appropriated from Congress. So, a long process to get there, but Congressman Murphy's tried to move that forward. For him to be able to do that, he has to say that he's got a cost share in place, or it won't move any further. So that's where we are, and it's before you to approve that cost share.
And that'll come out of the Beach Nurishment Fund?
Correct, and we have a sufficient amount of funding in that to cover that cost.
Bobby, that's what you explained to me earlier, do we have any idea of the cost-benefit analysis portion of this, rather than the full extent of the study?
I don't know, because the cost-benefit analysis that we have done takes in a broader scope than what I'm thinking the Corps did. When we talked to them about their cost-benefit analysis, when we were talking about the jetty project, it was very narrow in scope. They didn't take into account hardly any of the secondary impacts, whereas that Moffett-Nichols study we did took secondary impacts and even further impacts throughout the state to come up with the economic benefit of the inlet. So, depending on how far they go, if they just took the value of those houses that are in peril right now, it would be iffy if there's a cost-benefit formula that would work. But if they take into effect, you know, the impact on Highway 12, the impact on state roads, the impact on the entire economy, if they took into account that our RO plant there is an oceanfront RO plant, and doing nothing, it's not in any danger now or in the foreseeable future, but we don't know what it's going to be in twenty or thirty years from now. So, you know, if they take all that into account, then it expands that cost-benefit analysis, and it may be feasible. So I don't know the answer to your question, because I don't know yet how far they go.
What I'm trying to do is bracket what we're approving tonight.
Well, you're.
Financially, it's going to be hard to do.
I'm not looking for an open-ended commitment, I'm looking for a yes with some limitation as we proceed.
So, I don't know, I can't tell you how much the cost-benefit analysis is going to cost all by itself. Our, we're doing a not to exceed one and a half million, and then I'm going to work, I talked with the Corps as late as this morning to say, look, this is how we want to do it, we don't want you doing your engineering at the same time you're doing your cost-benefit analysis, because if the cost-benefit analysis comes back negative, we don't want to have to pay for engineering that we're not going to use. And so we want to keep this in order, and we want to work with you to make that work. And Chris Berman at the Corps told me they would do that, so, but I don't have any numbers, and they don't have any numbers yet for that.
We need to get it in writing, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Bobby, let me ask, I know the bricks and mortar obviously could, there, the facilities could be in peril down the road, but would the water source, would the ability to get water in that area be compromised over time?
If the road is compromised, then our ability to get water is compromised, because, and our ability to have fiber, internet, and all those other things are compromised because they all run in the right of way. I don't know what impacts it would have on the electrical system, but potentially it could. And so, you know, if we were doing an economic impact study, we would include all those things. What I can't tell you is how far they'll go to add those things to it yet.
And I got to ask this, you know, he came and asked us about doing a feasibility study on the inlet, on the jetty too, and wanted us to do a cost share on that. Is there any way we could roll all, both of those into one package?
Because if they're going to do a study, isn't it amazing? Every study they do is three million dollars.
Yeah, so, yeah, it would double our cost.
It's basically in the same area.
Well, we know what the thing with the inlet, we know what the feasibility study is.
Yeah, right.
We don't need to do inlet study, we just did one.
Yeah, no, he's not, he's not pushing that, Jim.
The other question that I ask is, I ask, you know, what if we just do it? Why can't we do it? We've already paid some money, we can, we can do a study for a lot less than that. The problem is, they can't do it unless it's done to the core parameters. And so everything we do, they have to do again to check behind us, so we don't gain anything by doing it on our own.
Well, they need that so they can apply for WERDA.
Right, and they can't fund it, except there's no way to get the money from the federal government to us. I said, well, why don't you just let us build it? We know how to do it, just give us the money. They can't get it to us without going through WERDA, and they can't go through WERDA without doing the feasibility study. And the feasibility study can't be done unless you do it to their criteria. And so, you're stuck with, if you're going to do it, you got to do it this way. If you aren't going to do it this way, then the federal funding is out.
This is why I love government, Mr. Chairman.
Bobby, you did a great job explaining that, I actually followed that.
The entire beach is federal, and how much money does the federal government give us for the beaches that we do?
They give us zero, zero.
Yeah, zero.
For years running.
So they're asking for one and a half million dollars to do half of their project on a federal beach in return for what?
If we're successful, forty million dollars.
Forty million bucks if we're successful, yeah.
Is there a timeframe?
Is there, is there a real timeframe? No, they haven't said, we'll tell you here, three to five years is sort of the number they're working at.
That's usually how long it takes them to do it.
I think we need to get more in writing.
I'm inclined to go with it.
So we're basically.
Well, I am too, excuse me, Gordon.
I was going to say, I mean, basically, what we're doing is, some portion or all
That's right.
Of, if it goes to, totally through the whole process, we're looking at one and a half million to get forty million.
Without forty million being guaranteed.
Right.
That's correct. That's correct.
But there's no, if at any stage it's non-feasible.
And at any stage, we can call off the dollar.
We call it off, that's correct.
And we're only paying some portion of the one and a half.
Correct.
Yep, so.
I would just want your conversation from them and writing to that effect.
Sure, I'll get her to confirm that with me.
Yeah, they're only going to do one step at a time.
All right.
Move to approve.
All right, motion on the floor to approve by the Vice Chair, been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those.
Does that, wait, does that motion include writing from them guaranteeing that? Like, I don't know who said that.
I'm going to get Chris Berman to. I'm gonna get Chris Berman to confirm the content of our conversation today is that we could do that incrementally as I described.
Did you hear that, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Any, any further comments from the board?
Well, does that, does that, does that need an amendment, motion amendment? Do I need to amend my motion to include this and writing from Berman?
Sure, I'm not going to do it without it, so.
Yeah, he's not gonna do it without it.
I amend my motion to include.
And this, this is second of.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I second, I'm sorry, Wally.
I trusted Bobby to do it the first time he said it.
All right, well, we stand with the regular motion that's on the floor. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to items 13 and 14.
County manager, let's take a five-minute break if you don't mind. Turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir. Items 13 and 14 are the Water Department System Development Fee and Water Connection Fee Increase Proposal and the Recommended Water Capital Improvements Plans for 2024 through 2029. And William Nash and Dave Clausen are here for that presentation as they're coming up, coming up. Introducing to William, y'all may have seen him before as our Assistant Director for our Utilities Division. With the retirement of Pat Irwin, he's now our Utilities Director, so it's good to have him aboard and good to have a seamless transition to our new director in our Water Department. So, we're in good hands. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you all.
I'm gonna go first. The, this first item, which is, which are pages 59 through 69 in your agenda packet file, are two calculations. One is the system development fee, which used to be called impact fees. And about six years ago, the General Assembly adopted a statute that said you had to go through a calculation for what the fee would be, or the maximum allowable for the fee. The statute's very specific and walks you through the process of how it has to be calculated and there's two or three different options to follow to make the calculation. We hired Raftellis Financial Consulting to do the calculation for us. They do our water rate model and they do these all over the state. The reason we did one this year is the original legislation got updated a year ago and said once it reaches five years old, you have to do a new calculation. With this new legislation, that's not the case anymore, the new calculation. You're free to do it once every five years, but it's good for 20 years now. So, we hired them to do that. They went through the process. As I said, it's very specific. The results are on your page 69 with the system development fees on the left side and on the right side are our meter connection fees. And William and I cannot find the last time that cost was updated and that is a cost-based calculation where you can only recover the cost of what it costs to get the actual meter and install it in the ground. We asked for an update and Raftellis did those calculations for us because we've switched to automated meters at a much higher cost. So, these are results and I'm gonna let William cover that and give you the recommendation.
Good evening.
Good evening, William.
As Dave was talking, the connection fees is what it costs to actually put the meter in the ground. Currently, a three-quarter inch meter, which is our most common meter that we install, runs about $360 for one meter and the current connection fee is 340. And the connection fee supposedly covers the piping, the brass, setters, labor, materials, whatever's needed to install that meter. So, currently, we are well below what's needed to even install our lowest price meter. So, that's why based off the 2023 rates that Raftellis presented, I believe Dave said it was page 69, we want to move forward with that so we, we're not actually in the negative every time we install a new water service for a customer.
Let me see if I understand the connection fee. See if I understand this or explain it because I don't understand. You said a three-quarter currently is about 340 and it actually costs you 360?
Yes, sir.
Well, when you say same side, do you mean same side of the street and across the street? What is allowed per, what do you mean by allowed per study? There's a study that was done and these are the numbers that they came up with?
Yes, sir, and you're correct. On the street, on the, that, on the same side of the street as the water line is less expensive to install without boring under the street, so on the other side is more expensive.
So, the study's telling us if you do it on the same side of the street, it's two grand and some change.
Yes, sir.
And we charging 340 bucks?
Yes, sir.
Hello. And it actually cost you 360 now?
Just for the meter.
Just for the meter?
Yes, sir. The, the meter fees, I mean, even if you look at the one inch, you go down to the next column, the current rate for a one inch is $500.
Right.
Current cost of a one-inch meter is $547. So, we're, we're well behind on our connection fees.
So, that's the meter. What else do we have to?
Well, so, let's just stick with the same side install.
Okay.
You've got corp stop, you've got meter cutoff, you've got brass, you've got anywhere from 50 to 100 feet of tubing, labor, equipment cost, all that involves just to install on the same side.
So, where, where does the, all of that total number relate to the same side allowed by the study? How, how do we compare there?
So, right now, like I said, we're only charging 340. So, but the study uses the, sorry.
So, what he's, we are way under.
Tell me about it.
And so, what's happening is our rate that we charge people for buying water is subsidizing the cost to make connections, which isn't what we should be doing.
Right.
And so, we're changing it to recover our actual cost, which is that $2,010 on the same side on a three-quarter inch meter. If all of our connections from now on, we charge that, then we get back what it costs us to do it and it's not then being subsidized by the.
What would be an example of this three-quarter inch same side?
You go to a house on your vacant lot and you need water.
Yeah.
So, if, if the water line, the distribution line is on your side of the street, then you put in your meter and you connect your meter to that distribution line. All the things that William just described are all the things you need to accomplish putting that meter in and connecting it to that water line.
Right.
If it's on the other side of the street, the, the distribution line, then you put your meter in on your side of the street, but you have to bore under the street to get it connected and that's, that's an additional cost.
That's the $400 or so difference.
Exactly, right.
And the difference between a development fee and a connection fee?
The, the system development fee is solely to recover the cost of the new unit upon your production facilities and that's allowed to either be.
I don't know what that means.
All right, so when you.
The actual cost of making the water.
So, when, when somebody hooks on, right now, we have a, let's just say we have a static customer base and so we have the, all the costs associated with having the plant and everything there are allocated among that customer base. Every time you add somebody to that, then the demand and the impact on that facility increases because you now have more demand on the system, more people. That impact fee is calculated by the actuaries to say this is what the impact in dollars is each time you hook up to that system. So, one is an impact to the system fee, that's the one on the left, that each new person has. And then on the right is just the actual cost to put it in and build it and do the things you gotta do to, to get the water.
So, let me see if I understand this. So, if I build a new house and I have that water, say it's on the same side, so according to this, it would be 2,010 for the hookup, the connection fee, plus another 3,200?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
If we, if we do this, yes, that's what I.
That's what I was getting at. So, these two numbers go together.
But today, it's 2,400 plus 340.
It's about 2,700.
2,700 and we're basically doubling that to 53.
Keep in mind that we have not had, we have not kept with inflation. It would have been wise to have gotten your water and in some, ahead of time. We're just keeping up with the demand now. We have automated water meters now. Even if.
And I'm not arguing with you, Danny. I'm wondering, why have we for so long planfully not done anything like this to keep up with those costs?
But, but remember that the change that happened was to switch to the automated meters, which is a higher cost than your traditional meters. And we decided to wait until we had most of the meters in, the new meters, to do the cost study, so that we're doing a cost study based on what we're putting in the ground from this point forward.
So, the old meters were in the $340 category?
And they had to be read. A guy had to go out and read them in a truck.
Okay, now I understand. That's helpful. Thank you.
And I'm sorry. But also with the three-quarter inch brass meters, the old style meters, they're up in the neighborhood of around $200 now. So, even if we did not do the AMI study or new meters, we'd still be way behind in time.
After the three-quarter inch meter, would you say that's half of the demand?
Well, it's 340.
I mean, that's what a lot of the rental cottages.
It's probably more than that. Probably 85 now.
So, any way you slice it, we're, we're behind the rest of it.
And, and the connection fee is a cost recovery. The system development fee is, the reason it says allowed per study is that's what you're allowed to charge. You're not required to charge it. But, and I don't know if I answered that question, but it's, it's the cost of the production facilities, whether they already exist and aren't used, the capacity, or you have to add it in the future, they cover that in the calculation.
So, I can just understand this. It's gonna be $5,000 for a water meter if I'm building a new house.
Yeah.
If it's on my side of the road, if it has to draw on another side of the road, it's gonna be an extra 500 bucks?
400.
400 dollars.
Yes.
And I just want to point out, even if we do the, even if the system study and the connection fee is approved, we are actually, Dare County will still be cheaper than all the towns except for Knightshead. Knightshead's the lowest and the other counties in the area will still be higher than us. We'll still be the second lowest as far as to install a three-quarter meter.
Well, we, I mean, we can't continue the way we're doing. We're, we're losing money. I mean, we're not even, we're not even breaking even.
So, Bobby, you also said that we were subsidizing the cheaper rate with increase.
What happens is all the money goes in the pot and we run the water system. And one of the revenue sources is your water rate that you pay for however much water you use each month. And to the extent we don't recover the cost to connect or the impact fee from that, from these dollars, then the difference is made up in your water rate.
So, is the rate gonna drop?
No, because the, the, the real answer to that question is.
Looking at our water.
What do you think?
Just, I have, we had a big debate in, between me and, and Dave and, and William and Raftellis about what should we do, what should we not do? Because the cost to you on your water bill, one person in a house like yours is insignificant. It's only gonna be a dollar or two, a quarter that you're actually subsidizing this. And so, the question was, is the bang worth the bite? Is the doubling, as Commissioner Ross said, worth saving you $2 on your water bill? And I made up $2. I don't know what the number really is, but it's a small amount. Is it worth it? And they convinced me that it was worth it because it was the right way to structure your fee system so that you're paying for the right things with the right dollar pots. And so, that's why this is here, but it isn't going to change your water bill at all. You're, you're not gonna see any difference.
Well, and, and my last question is, in terms of scale and magnitude on an annual basis, I mean, do we do 100 of these hookups a year? So, it's a $200,000 decision? Do we do 1,000? It's a $2 million decision? I always like a scale of magnitude on these, some context.
Currently this year, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers to give you the exact number, but we've installed well over 100 surfaces this year.
I was gonna, I was gonna say around 165, 175.
Okay, so it's, again, I'm just trying to get.
Nothing to sneeze at, but it's not huge.
Yeah, right, right. Let's do it. Thanks.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Mentioned the open.
Measure to approve.
Oh, one, one more thing I'd like to mention, I'm sorry. We had discussed if this was approved, that the connection fees would go into effect August 1st and the system development fee would go into effect January 1st. And that would be, according to the study, would go up in percentage, it would go up 12% instead of the whole 36% increase. It would go up 12% the first year, 12% the second year and 12% the third year to get to the, the total.
Okay, let's do this one more time. You're introducing a lot of numbers and facts there at the end of the game.
Let me give you a bigger picture.
Yeah, let me give you the bigger picture.
So, the idea was, are we gonna just meet tonight and tomorrow, all these numbers change and then the development community rings your phone off the hood, what in the world's going on?
Well, you're reading my mind, county manager.
Yeah, I can hear those. I can hear those builders.
So, what I asked him to do was run the numbers. If we phased this in over some number of months, he just gave you the number of months and how it would go, then it would incrementally, if people could plan, people who had already planned to start their house next month aren't going to get hit with this expense that they didn't need, that they didn't anticipate, but people who are planning a house out after January in that time, then they've got time to plan for it in their financing. So, that was what we were trying to do was, is incrementally do this and not do it all at once on the development fee side. On the connection fee side, we were planning on doing that right away and going ahead and getting our cost right now for those so that we aren't out of pocket for the work we're actually doing.
So, there could be a minimal run on the Water Department to get this stuff in before the end of the year? A lot of guys you want to.
If they do, they do, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, pleasure to the board.
Measure to approve.
This motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve to increase the water system development fee and the water connection fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous.
That's a, that's a resounding, frightened me a bit, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're item number 14 also. I decided not to wait to bring you the Water Capital Improvements Plan until we get the General Capital Improvements Plan done, which I think will be your August, which will be your August meeting most likely.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow, the CIP committee.
The CIP, but bring it to the board.
Yeah.
Right, I'm sorry.
So, we're not going to touch on this tomorrow?
Not, but what, what we've done is instead of, there's two CIPs. There's a water CIP and a regular CIP.
Right, right.
We sort of kind of do them at the same time normally because it works out that way. This time, because our other CIPs got the problems that we're having to deal with, this one's ready to go, so we went ahead and put it on the agenda.
Okay.
To get you to approve the water CIP now.
And I'm gonna have William, after I tell you what the effect of the capital plan is, go through quickly the, the major projects. On your file, your file pages 75 and 76, 75 is the, the dashboard from the Raftellis Water Rate Model that's got this recommended capital improvement plan in it. And page 76 shows the ending fund balances. Everything in the plan is cash, is recommended to be cash funded, to be pay-as-you-go. Last year's model had a small six or seven million dollar debt issue. In working with Raftellis, we would lower the cash balances. We ended last year at 30.5 million for the water fund. With this plan, we would get down to 26 million at the end of fiscal '25, but we would be back to the same and actually a little bit above the same level or the 2022 level by the end of fiscal '28. So, to avoid doing a relatively small and inefficient bond sale, we can cover these in cash, recover the position and have no negative financial effect on the system or, or the debt rating for the system. So, what you do is projects.
And what we have coming up for 2024, what we have, what we're hoping to get out of this is we want to complete the AMR system. So, that'll finish installing the few meters we have left that need to be installed and then we'll start putting the collectors up and then. And then we'll start putting the collectors up, and then that will complete the AMI, AMR to AMI transition. So, no longer will the guys need to go out in the field. It'll, it'll be hitting a button at the North RO facility, and we will be able to read the entire county within a day. It will also let us see leaks on meters within twenty-four hours. It's a, it's a good overall technological process, that'll be a huge benefit to people. If your home starts leaking, I'll be able to give you a call within twenty-four hours and tell you, you have an issue. You don't have to wait ninety days.
There's some homeowners that actually have the manuals, and given the fact that there is some technology with it, it's, you can understand it. It's not difficult to comprehend what you've got in the ground if you're inclined to know what you're, about the water you're getting.
Yes, sir.
Yep. I've talked with some people about some leaks and stuff. They've had, and one guy had, had the manual right from that he downloaded and solved his own problem. It matched with the county. They reached an agreement on leaky end.
And that's, that's definitely a benefit, as you mentioned, the technology. Part of this AMI system, you know, there's potential to have a smartphone app for the customer that they can link to their meters. And they can actually get notifications themselves. You know, that's, that's more future stuff, but it is part of the completion of this, where we can kind of start looking into things a little bit deeper to benefit the customer.
We've been doing this AMI for what, a couple of years now?
AMR. Eight years?
I mean?
Eight, eight, ten years.
Have we been doing it that long? Good God, time flies. What, what kind of, have you had any ma, any problems with it up to this date?
Not at, not at this point. The only issues we've had with any of the meters so far is when we had the big freeze back in December. Some of the tops popped off the meters from where they were not prop, the meter lids were all for broken. You know, the cold air got in, popped the tops. But other than that, they've been pretty accurate.
Good. Did, did, is there a life expectancy on them?
Twenty-five years.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yep. And so, the battery life is the twenty-five year battery life. And then, you know, obviously if we see an issue, we'll trade them out. But up to that point, we see no issues.
Well, that's, that's huge with leaks. If you can detect that immediately from the system, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir, it'll be very beneficial to the customer and to us from a water, water savings standpoint. And the other big item we have for 2024 will be the upgrade of the Skycow water treatment facility. Currently, it is a blend of ultrafiltration and ion exchange. We want to do away with the ion exchange because the processes, it requires salt for regeneration. Salt during the summer is currently about forty thousand dollars a month to regen the AEs. And they need to be reworked, new media and all that. For the same cost as updating the AEs, we can actually install two new trains in the Skycow facility, and we'll go all with ultrafiltration. So it'll be a better quality of water coming out of there, and a newer technology and a newer process. So, by upgrading those and going ahead with two of those, it'll give us a little bit of extra play during the summer months, where if we lose the NRO facility, if we lose a train because those two facilities are tied together. If we were to go down a train, it would give us just a little bit of leeway during the summer months, one more stretch there.
Let me ask you a real, sort of related question.
Yes, sir.
Has there ever been any question about the quality of Dare County water? I mean, I've never actually stopped and thought about that.
We're fortunate.
We are.
We are. Yes.
As far, as far as beach communities are concerned, we have outstanding water.
We have two advantages, one is we're not using surface water.
Right, the aquifer.
And aquifer's deep, and so, surface water treatment's different than what we do. You put chemicals with it and it, it creates weight on the bad stuff, and that falls out and creates sludge and all these other things. The ion exchange, or not the, the, the reverse osmosis pumps it through the, the filters and doesn't create as much sludge. The water's cleaner that's coming out of the ground.
I mean, I drink it all the time, and I had some friends recently say, oh my God, I would never drink this water. And I said, hmm, drink it every day? Then I thought, I have never thought about it, just drink it every day.
I'll just tell you, back in the eighties, the old Cape Hatteras Water Association.
It was brown.
The potable water that was there to drink and wash your clothes in was, looked like diluted iced tea.
Yeah.
Is that what happened to those people talking about, it's too many...
You did not wash your white clothes.
Right, so, we're way, 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 way beyond that.
There's a book in that story.
Not you, Mary Helen, you're excluded from that. So we've taken care of that, it doesn't happen anymore. Okay, good, 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 thanks, yeah.
And I mean, let me send an invite out, at any time you'd like to come by and see the facility and see how it works, we'll be born glad to give you a tour.
It's pretty sophisticated.
You should take him up on that if you have, it's pretty interesting.
I bet it is.
All, all three plants are pretty...
Is that a Skycow?
Skycow, NRO, all of our facilities have RO units.
Go to the Kill Devil Hills one, that's the easiest one to move around, it's pretty cool.
Oh yeah, it's pretty spacious and easier, it's easier, the flow of the system works a little better to the eye, so you can follow it a little bit better if you're not familiar with it.
I'm welcome, Skycow.
Uh, uh, board, I, I had a request from one of the history, the, the Native American groups down there, these guys that are into the history and stuff of Croatan and everything, with seven hun, the seven hundred thousand gallon tank coming up for a painting in twenty-four. It used to, it used to just say Dare County, I think I might have said the Cape on it, but the justification is, if we've got Chickamaconico on one tank, and we've got Hatteras on the other tank, if we're gonna keep with the Native American heritage, why can't you advocate for us to have Croatan on the Cape Hatter, on the Buxton Woods Tower? I mean, we've got the Buxton Tower, the four hundred thousand gallon, says Buxton on it.
Before we paint one of those towers, I'll ask William to come back to you for what we're gonna name it, and you all decide what you want to call the, the towers.
Oh, we're never getting named in the tower. And we got in trouble for naming bridges, now we gonna start naming towers?
I get those are the kind of calls I get, you just heard him say the Hatteras folks.
We can either do what we've always done.
I was kidding Danny.
I'm not.
We can always keep doing what we're doing and, and keep the current names on the towers, and we won't bother you with it. If you want to change those names, then if you want me to, I'll bring them to you each time before we paint them, and you can approve the name, your call.
To interrupt if you don't mind, I've actually been working with Dorothy on the latest county seal in her department. And one of the things that we've been discussing is towers are getting painted to change everything and update it to just reflect the, the current county seal and...
And, so do you want me to bring them back or keep doing what we're doing?
I ain't going down to naming river.
Here's, we're gonna keep doing what we're doing until you tell us different. There you go.
I've, I've got...
What's the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it?
Right, okay.
Exactly. I, I do have a question though on this. I, I'm noticing just about every water tower in the county is on here to be repainted and engineered and all that stuff. I'm also noticing that there's, the Southern Shores Tower is not on here.
Southern Shores was just recently done last year.
Yeah, come on Steve, we just fixed it.
Okay. Well, it looks, looks good. No, it's, yeah, anyway, I, I'll, I'll talk to you later, bud.
Okay, but yes, sir, Southern Shores was just painted last year. Twenty, matter of fact, it was September, October, I believe it was, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So you, so you're saying that the painting contractors didn't do a better job?
I'll take another look at it, but I'll, I'll see.
Let me know Steve.
Yeah, I will.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I've got, I was just, went over to twenty twenty-four. I mean, if you'd like to go further in detail with the CIP, I can, with the additional year.
So, so you're requesting us to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine Water CIP, Adopt a Capital Improvement Project Ordinance, and Adopt a Budget Amendments for the Water Fund and the Water Capital Reserve Fund, is that correct? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Yep.
Second. Motion on the floor then by the Vice Chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Thank y'all.
Thank, thank you, thank you so much, William, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And we, and on your new position, and, and we know you'll do well. And we appreciate your employment with Dare County and taking that new position.
And I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, William.
Good job, thanks William.
Senator, item fifteen, from time to time, we adopt new ordinances and we put them in our ordinance book. What this is, and when we do that, we go back and have a public hearing and codify all the ordinances that we did to make sure we didn't leave anything out. So, we're asking to set a public hearing for our next meeting, or we call it S thirteen and S fourteen, but they're the supplements to our ordinances, and includes all the ordinances for the years twenty-one and twenty-two, to make sure they're all get put in the, the ordinance book that's developed by our contractor that does that and gets put online and, and is updated for that. And to do that, we have to have a public hearing, and then at that public hearing, you'll hear any public comments. And if there aren't any, then you'll vote to approve that, and that re-codifies all those ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the motion, motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, been seconded by Commissioner House, any further discussion?
I've got just, Bobby, is this in conjunction with the fact that, uh, uh, North Carolina's rewriting the building code? Is this, this is separate?
We would, we do this from time to time, and it didn't get done one year. So there's an extra year in there, so that we're doing two this time instead of one, but yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, item sixteen is the Association of County Commissioners is meeting soon. You all have to appoint a voting delegate.
Move to appoint.
Chairman.
I think you're Bob.
If you include in your motion to allow the chair, if you're gonna choose the chairman, to serve at upcoming until you make a change, so we don't have to do this every year.
Yeah.
If he's gonna be your delegate each year, then you can make that permanent until you change it. And, and then include, and are you the alternate typically?
I was.
Yep.
Include Commissioner Overman as the alternate in your motion.
So moved.
Second, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
All right, next is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of amendments, we have budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two for the actual collections of system and development fees. We have the Dare County Wilkinson Building lease, we have the Transportation Department Sure Bus Software Licensing Agreement, the Governor's Highway Safety Program, governmental resolution, the Gun Club lease, the Public Works Refuge Trucks Budget Amendment, the Sistel multi-function machine lease, Tax Collectors Report, Amendment to the Capital Project and Budget Amendments for Fiscal Years Twenty-three for System Development Fees, the Water Department NC DOT Three-Party Waterway Encroachment Agreement, Health and Human Services, Public Health Division Community Linkages to Care Overdose Prevention and Response Grant, the Human, Health and Human Services, Public Health Division Breaking Through Task Force, It's a Public Awareness Campaign to Address Community Mental Health, it's a grant, reimbursement resolutions for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four Vehicle and Equipment Financing, and fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four Sanitation Equipment Financing, and then the Dare County Sheriff's Office Flock Safety License Plate Reader Contract.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed likewise, motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. First you have the Jury Commission Board, the term of Elizabeth Creef-Meekins expires in August, she would like to be reappointed.
Move to appoint, second.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, it's been seconded by Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Next is the President's Center Advisory Board, Brian Jones is recommended for appointment as a Salvo area member.
Move to approve please.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Mans Harbor Community Center Board, Jennifer Gilbert, Betty Beasley, and Vicki Craddock wish to be reappointed for another term.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin and Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the ABC Board, the ABC Board recommends that Phil Scarborough Senior and Jimmy Pierce be reappointed.
Move to appoint, second.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair to reappoint, it's been seconded by Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Wanches Community Center, Tina Sheridan, Bill Wilson, Becky Beecham, and Joseph Lee Will wish to be reappointed. And Elizabeth Ann Creef-Meekins is recommended to fill the vacancy left by Sally DeFosse.
Motion.
Point, Elizabeth Ann Creef-Meekins. Second.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, it's been seconded by Commissioner House and Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries unanimous.
Um, next is the Virginia S Tillet Community Center Advisory Board, Teresa Griffin, Jonathan Delucia, Mitchell Bateman, Jennifer Phillips, and Rob Ross are recommended for reappointment.
Move to appoint, second. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to reappoint, it's been seconded by Vice Chairman Overman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming appointments, in August you have the ABC Board with two terms, the Jury Commission with one term, and the Virginia Tillet Community Center Advisory Board with five terms. In September you have the Health and Human Services Board with six terms expiring. And in October you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with three terms expiring, and the Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring. And that'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you County Manager, that brings us to item twenty, Commissioners' Business and Managers' Business. And I will ask the County Manager, I know we're going to a closed session, but do you have anything else at this time?
Um, just one thing, and, and it looks like we're trying to get some of that resolved tomorrow. I didn't know that until I just got a text. But I was gonna give you an update on the Island H permits, and those are the, it's a disposal site for these channels that are out here between Oregon, Illinois, and Wanches. And we've been going back and forth with the Division of Coastal Management over getting those permits. It's boiled down to like three issues. One is dredge windows, which means the time of year when you can actually dredge. We're trying to eliminate those windows, they want to have some restrictions, and we haven't gotten that resolved. The second is a depth trigger, we thought we had that resolved. The way we were looking at it, it was one thing, the way they're actually putting it in writing created something else. We think that was inadvertent, but we don't know for sure. And so we're trying to have a conversation with them about that issue to make sure we get it to what we all understood it was supposed to be. And then the third, there was a, part of the problem is that they need the sand off of those islands, off of the dredge area to go on the islands. And we're having trouble because we don't have sand to do that. If we do it with a hopper, we dispose of it off, if, if the Corps does it with a pipeline, they put it on the island. So, there's an agency that wants it to be done by the Corps, we want to be able to do it when it needs it with the dredge. And so what we're, what we proposed was that we wouldn't do it with a hopper dredge if there was a Corps project scheduled within ninety days. We haven't reached agreement on whether that should be ninety days or six months, or what that timeframe would be. So, those are the three issues with, with those permits for those channels. I, I called it Island H, that's not with regard to Island H, it's a different issue. But it's with these channel permits that we have coming up. And I know that Steve has been active on the task force, and Jim has been active on the task force and are aware of it. But I wanted you all to be aware of it because it's been going on for some time, and I didn't want you to get a call and not know what they were talking about. I just got an email that, you know, they're talking about trying to have a call with the head of Coastal Management in the morning, and seeing if I could be on it. We have our CIP in the morning, so I can't do it at the time that they had anticipated. So I told them what times I was available, we'll see what happens from that. But we may get it resolved tomorrow, hopefully. All right, and that's, that's all that I have, other than at the appropriate time I need a closed session.
Thank you County Manager. That brings us to Commissioners' Business, Commissioner Ross, do you mind kicking that off us?
I will, and I will move through it quickly. On the seventh of July, I attended the commemoration of a historical marker. On the seventh of July, I attended the commemoration of a historical marker to Carolista Baum for her efforts at Jockeys Ridge State Park. It was really a neat event and the great story of how Jockeys Ridge was preserved from development, and Ms. Baum was obviously a very key player in that. On the eleventh, several of us were able to attend the Mantio Community Health Clinic Dedication at 402 Budley Street, and that was nice to see. We've got an open center and Dr. Harrison will be there, and access to primary care, physician, healthcare is definitely improving. Wally and I were able to attend a webinar here, a national webinar hosted by Project Opioid USA, and it essentially was lamenting, as we all should, the fact that a hundred and ten thousand Americans will die from opioid poisoning, of which seventy, eighty percent or more is tied to fentanyl, and fentanyl raw materials are being sourced in China, they are being prepared and cooked in labs in Mexico, and they are coming across the southern border like a sieve.
Number one killer.
Yeah, and we, yes, it is, the number one. Danny, Commissioner Couch correctly points out, it's the number one reason for young adults to die. But, my, my personal thoughts on that southern border will remain mine for the moment. Number four, hey, we had a great farmer's market. I'm looking at Dorothy here, Caitlin and Stephanie were there, Commissioner Bateman was there, Commissioner House was there, and that was on the thirteenth in Nag's Head, and we were able to greet a lot of visitors and locals expressing, you know, the various aspects, the positive side of Dare County. July twenty-ninth, July twenty-ninth, there will be a silent auction sponsored by the Virginia Tillot Community Center to benefit Special Olympics. It's from ten to twelve on July twenty-ninth, a lot of cool stuff to bid on, so I wanted to call that out. And lastly, I will be attending a reception on August one at the Lost Colony hosted by Roanoke Island Historical Association for Governor Cooper's wife, our first lady, Kristen Cooper, and the Lost Colony Play afterwards. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As County Manager said, the ongoing negotiation with the permits and trying to get those all straightened out from Oregon, that's taken quite a bit of time. Also, I wanted to point out that in the past couple of weeks, there was a joint meeting between the, all the advisory committees and the North County Fisheries Commission, and it seemed to be a pretty positive meeting and seemed like there were some good ideas thrown back and forth, and we'll, we'll hope that some of those ideas land on good favor and start working their way through. Our day in history, Tsar Nicholas II was assassinated in nineteen eighteen, which he was the last Tsar for Russia, which led the way for the Communist Party to take over that country, and on a lighter note, nineteen fifty-five, Disneyland opened in Anaheim, California. And last, last Commissioners' Meeting, we did not have a Pet of the Week. Well, this time, we got two pets.
Our Pets of the Week this week are Boots and Socks. Boots and Socks are super sweet brothers. They love to play and lounge around. They've been together since they were kittens, and they're now three years old. Come by and take these super sweet boys home with you today. To adopt Boots and Socks or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org, or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So definitely drop by the SPCA, take Boots and Socks home, give them a forever home that they need, and also like to, hope that everybody had a safe and happy Fourth of July. I know the fireworks presentations that all went off were outstanding, and as far as the emergency services are concerned during July fourth, actually fairly calm. So that was, that was amazing. So once again, happy Fourth of July, let's celebrate our independence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Aaron Pelton for his twenty-five years of service to Dare County. Just need more like him, just as years keep adding up, we surely appreciate it. Commissioner Ross mentioned the webinar that he and I watched the other day, and it was really accurately pointed out during that, and he alluded to this as well, is that the person who created the webinar said, "We no longer have an opioid crisis, we have a fentanyl crisis." And I think that was very accurately pointed out because we certainly, we certainly have that. The new healthcare center in Manio, well needed, it was a great turnout for that, and there's probably over a hundred people there, it was, it was, it was pretty cool. Got to meet on the twentieth of June, the COA had the management of North Carolina Blue Cross Blue Shield, they were here, here to look at, I think they were doing a tour in eastern North Carolina of educational facilities and whatnot, we were glad to have them here. And Roxanna Ballinger and I attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Opioid Summit on June seventh and eighth in Durham, and there were some really great presentations made there. We have video of some of those that we intend to show at a, at a variety of places, starting out with the Saving Lives Task Force meeting tomorrow, so if you get an opportunity to see those videos, particularly of one speaker who is a doctor from Tennessee who was under, under the influence of opioids himself and got over it and has a treatment center there now, it's a very moving presentation, but if you get a chance to see that, you owe it to yourself to see it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I, I know the table I sat at with those Blue Cross Blue Shield folks, I, I assume the table you were at with the, with the manager and Commissioner Ross, every one of those folks were just totally impressed with what Dare County does. That they, I mean, they said no other county that they had visited, and they visited about seventy percent of the counties. Said none of them does it any better than Dare County, and that was really, really quite pleasing to hear from, from my table anyway. I hope y'all got the same feedback from them at, at your table. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Just wanted once again to congratulate the Manio girls soccer team. I will tell you that the gentleman with her, with those guys today, Ryan Crusoe is my chef at my restaurant, and when he interviewed, he told me, he said, "You know, I'm a soccer coach," and he said, "This group of girls here, they're going to go places," he says, "so I need to let you know when we go to the playoffs, I'm going to have to have some extra time off." And so we, of course, we accommodated him every time he needed off, and, but he was, when he first saw these girls, and he just came from Raleigh last year, he knew he had a special group, he really did, and he's been around the soccer a long time, soccer player, played in college, and very knowledgeable, so congratulate those girls again, once again. Talking about the water, guys, this is a true story now, when I was a little kid, I was raised on the same property I live on right now, in Kitty Hawk Village. My grandma and granddaddy lived there, and I lived there till I was about five and a half, and then my mother remarried and moved to Elizabeth City. But our bathtub was orange, the bathtub was orange, my granddaddy's shirts, they were always orange around the collar, orange around the sleeves and so forth, until I moved to Elizabeth City and we had a white bathtub, I did not know any difference. And all of a sudden, the water was clear and everything else, where you would, you would-
Scared you.
It's truth. And you would, you would, we would have cheesecloth to go over the drains and so forth to catch the rust that came out of the soil. So anyway, we've come a long way.
Yeah, we have.
That's all I got.
Now that you're in the house, did you change the tub out?
Oh, well. That house burnt down when I was twelve years old.
I bet you don't even use cheesecloth anymore, do you?
You don't use cheesecloth anymore, do you?
No, we don't. That's all I got.
Commissioner Couch?
Yeah, Urban, speaking of, and y'all, speaking of water, I mean, that's how Kill Devil Hills got its name, with the moonshine stills, they were running water through there, they made such an awful, awful product, they said it was bad enough to kill the devil, so quite a legacy we got going on water. I know on this board and some of the people listening and watching, I know the name Tommy Gray, and he was our IT Director for years. He, Tommy, he ushered in the age of the internet here with Dare County. He oversaw a lot of large impactful projects, E-911, voiceover, internet phones, GIS mapping. He had a thirty-year career with Dare County, and he was also my neighbor. He was a, I loved talking hunting and fishing with him. When he retired, that was absolutely his passion, and I lived back in Buxton Woods, and there's a lot of dogs, run an area there where dogs can actually run, you don't have to chain them up. We were getting a lot of traffic back there, walkers and stuff now, and when they, dog starts barking, they go bananas, but they're all friendly dogs, and Tommy was really good to them, he kept a thing of snacks to throw out to dogs, so you always see a gaggle of neighborhood dogs down there in his yard, but he, it was, it was a loss to the community, but on behalf of his family, I would like to thank him for his service to Dare County, thirty-year service. And on another note, another sad note, I think everybody knows when they were growing up, there was always a, like a community mom that took care of everybody, and for us in Buxton, when I was growing up, back in the sixties, early seventies, it was Zola, Zola with a Z, Steger. I mean, she, there, there might be anywhere from three to four to as many as fifteen, sixteen, because they lived right on the beach and we were all surfers and everything, but she would make chocolate chip pancakes. First time I ever had a chocolate chip pancake, and this was before the days of IHOP, was Zola, she would do things that the kids would just, just flock to her house, and she was so good to everybody, and I mean, you know, when you're growing up down there, you get into a lot of mischief and everything, and when you've got ten, eleven, twelve-year-old kids hanging around with eighteen, nineteen, there's a lot of bad influence when you have such a large peer group age there. But everybody, she, she brought out the good in everybody. She lived a long time, she was in her nineties, but there was a big loss there in the community. I saw something initially on Facebook, and it just, I mean, there's still comments coming in from people having grown up there that have now relocated and just sending their condolences to her children, Andy and Donnie and Gary, and of course Patricia, who lives in the mountains now, or out in the western part of the state. So, Zola Steger, S-D-E-G-E-R, so between Tommy and Zola, it's a pretty rough week. I attended on behalf of the board here, the United States Weather Station, the flag raising ceremony at the Hatters Weather Station, the old Hatters Weather Station down there, that's a very significant building, it's, it was the forerunner of NOAA, and that station was one of the first ones to be constructed. The last nail was driven in that building just ahead of the one on the Michigan coastline, I want to say it was Traverse City, Mackinac Island area there, but it has the distinction of being the, the first official weather station. But there's a couple of guys that went through in service down there. One was a guy named Sam Dozier, he was out of Southport, he was an attorney by trade, but Sam Dozier was, became a pioneer of meteorology. He figured out, beginning with the hurricane of eighteen ninety-nine, this weather station at that time was in the Gaskins Home, down about where Wings is, Neato Shopping Center, down in that area where that is today, but he figured out when these hurri, he was the first to figure out when these hurricanes came up the coast, why they seemed to maintain their intensity all the way out of the Caribbean, and he figured out it was the interaction of that hot water that serves as a fuel on these hurricanes that helps sustain in the hot water of the Gulf Stream. And also supplement that, he also saw when there was no cloud covering, you didn't have any systems moving in, that that just further, because we are the number two strike probability in East Coast outside of Florida, that there's no cloud cover allows those things to really sustain their, their strength, and that's why we get hammered a lot because of some of the work that he did. The second thing, he also understood the application of, or the, excuse me, the interaction of when a cold front comes across the country and that cooler air interacts with the hot water of the Gulf Stream, it forms a low-pressure system. He called it the Hatters Low. Today, it is known as the New England Nor'easter or Na'asta, and, but for years was known as the Hatters Low. Third thing is, that was also the building that the initial SOS from the Titanic was picked up in and relayed north where the two men running the wireless, this is April fourteenth, nineteen twelve, a guy named Horace Gaskins and his supervisor, Richard Daley, automatically relayed that, they were required to do so. I mean, this, that, that SOS from the Titanic is called a CQD, then come quickly distressed. Traveled eight hundred and eight miles. It didn't go to New York, it didn't go anywhere else because they had too much electrical interference, but it was nothing but a flat ocean that night. The old timers said the only thing you could hear was the occasional crack of a wave breaking on the shore, just small, you know, less than a foot waves breaking on the shore, and so they relayed it north, they were reprimanded for cluttering the lines with foolishness, and then six hours later, we knew the awful truth, that was the largest maritime disaster to date that this country's ever known. One thousand five hundred and three lives lost, over half of which were actually Irish children who were bringing, being brought over to New York City as domestic servants, just awful, awful tragedy. But had they listened to those two men, maybe history could have been impacted a little bit, but it was a great ceremony, a lot of people out there, got a chance to see some guys that I grew up with really take charge of their community going forward. Bruce Balance, he was the impetus for getting that done, he grabbed Dave Alec, he might even strong-armed Bob, our chairman, one time, "We got to do something about this, like getting these flags back up here." And then of course, D.M. Gray, his father, excuse me, his grandfather was the last person to raise the flag. It was our weather channel. I mean, when you're going down to Hatters, the first thing you did was look over there, white cloud, I mean, excuse me, white flag, fair weather, triangle, small craft, one black square, red and black square, gale, two squares, you had no business being out, that's a hurricane warning there. But it was a really nice, really nice ceremony, glad to see that we can do things locally. Last thing, guys, I've had a couple of calls here, and it's concerning the roundabout in Rodanthie, and these are professional people, some of the utility contractors, some emergency professionals down there. There's not been a mandate to do anything, but it's my obligation to bring to this board. We're seeing a lot of camper traffic down there. You've got the three major campgrounds in the tri-villages, there's actually a major campground that's going to be coming up before the planning board here, not too long, but when you take these trucks and these trailers, I mean, they could be sixty-foot a truck and, and trailer, Bobby, as you know, and when they come up on that roundabout and you can only go around at ten or fifteen miles an hour on checkout time, you get quite a backup going in there. In other words, kind of what has been created down there is what Southern Shores, Curry Duck, Duck and Corolla have been trying to solve for years. Now, hopefully, this is just going to be a seasonal thing. I don't know what the answer is, I've had some people tell me, well, DOT just needs to get rid of it and just make a big swinging curve because there's not enough traffic coming southbound out of Merlot Beach to even justify the roundabout, and I, I supported that roundabout. I, I thought what, you know, that's what our DOT engineers do, what's good in Pinehurst, what's good in Winston, what's good in Pittsboro, you know, that's, that's what they do, it's a stock traffic implementation throughout North Carolina. But, you know, we, we'll just have to kind of monitor that going forward, hopefully it's just a seasonal thing and does not create another, does not create a public safety issue because of traffic backed up, and I say that because when the young man, a friend of Urban and I died Monday, the fourteenth of June, I believe it was, the ambulances had a hard time getting up there just from standard traffic coming through the roundabout, and it was such a ba, it was, it was awful, horrific crash there at the, at the Bird Center, Bird Observatory, right there at the Canals- Center, Bird Observatory, right there at the canal's entrance, uh, northbound entrance to the, uh, southbound entrance to the canal zone. And, uh, same thing coming down, ambulance is coming down, uh, uh, across the bridge, because people who were coming down for day trippers, we have a lot of day trippers on Monday and Tuesday, after they've checked in on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, they're gonna take their every-year trip down to Oak Ridge Oak and wait in line with everybody to get over there. But, uh, it, it was, it took a while, I felt bad for EMS, and Steve, I don't know if you'd heard anything to that effect, but, uh, I mean, we got great professionals, we've invested a lot in our EMS going forward, and, uh, emergency services and med flight and stuff, but I'm hoping that, uh, as these kind of things happen in the future, that we'll realize when there's a perfect storm of catastrophic things working against you, that we'll continue to overcome them. But again, I'm just, I'm bringing it up as something that I'm hearing about, and, uh, the, uh, roundabout's got a PR problem, hopefully-
Well, I, I can definitely tell you in a lot of states that have put them in, um, Washington State being one of the biggest ones that put roundabouts in, they're actually taking them out. They actually, um, I think last year, they took fifty of them and uninstalled them.
Let's monitor it going forward, if we have to reach out to DOT.
Danny, I'm, I'm sure the sheriff's, the sheriff's got to be aware of some backups and stuff, and his deputies, uh, I hope that we're trying to, um, do something to maybe speed it up down there, I don't know if they're, are they, are they at the turn, try, I mean, that the, the roundabout trying to-
Saturday checkouts and that kind of thing, but we've had such a cr- crush of traffic-
Right.
-that it's, it's essentially a lot of days, most every day in the height of the summer.
Well, we need to stay on top of it.
Yeah, let's leave, let, let the en, let the engineers do their jobs, they're listening, they're good to us, and, uh, I'm sure that we can count on their capabilities to address it, as the need arises. That's all I have.
Well, thank you for, um, mentioning those, uh, two Hatters folks that, that, uh, we've lost, and, um, I, I love, I love listening to your history. You know, we talk about the Titanic, you talked about Titanic, what a huge, what a huge loss we had recently with the implosion of, uh-
Going down.
Yes. Trying to, trying to view that, um, pretty sad story there. You talk about the weather, uh, I think we're seeing unprecedented ocean, uh, temperatures, uh, at least I'm hearing ninety degrees in some parts of Florida, it's just unbelievable, the water temperature. So, um, uh, all the, all the weather problems we've had coming across the country, I'm, I don't even want to think about what I'm, what you-
DH work.
-know I'm thinking about it, so, so, uh, we'll just continue to hope and pray we, we have a, a successful, uneventful season, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I have one other item I'd like to ask for your consideration this evening.
Don't forget me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Hey, Jim.
Right. I, I was scratching them off and I got carried away, I'm sorry, Jim, go, go for it.
That's all right. Uh, well, I just want to thank, uh, my fellow commissioners for the thoughtful and, uh, uplifting present that they gave me. Um, Bob, Commissioner, Chair, I mean, Chairman Bob brought it over to my house today, and I tell you what, it really made me feel good. Um, and with that said, I'd just kind of like to give a quick update on my health. Uh, tomorrow I go in for another chemo treatment, and then I'll have three more, so by the end of August, I'll have completed all my chemo, and, uh, see where I go from there, but I'm feeling decent. Um, it's kind of like being on a roller coaster, after I get chemo, I feel like junk for a week or so, and then I start feeling good again, and then I get another chemo treatment. So, anyway, all in all, I feel pretty good about it. And that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, we got a picture of you up on the screen here, we need to, we need to update it, 'cause I've shared with the Board today, my visit with you. I told them you had a full beard and, uh-
Yeah.
And, uh, a little bit, little few less pounds, but, uh-
The hard way, yeah.
But, uh-
Only, only eighty-five pounds less.
Right.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
But a great visit, I had a great visit with Jim, and what's so impressive about Jim is his attitude, his, his attitude, uh, and the way he's tackling this is unprecedented. I mean, he's, he, he, I thought he looked great, and, and I know he doesn't, probably doesn't think so, but for what he's been through, he, he really looked good, and his attitude is just unbelievable, and-
You gotta stay positive.
Yeah, absolutely.
We miss you.
And, uh, and like I said-
We miss you guys.
It was a great visit, and we'll continue to pray for your full recovery, Jim, no doubt.
Well, thank you.
And we appreciate you being on in our Board meetings, uh, via communications, and Jim's on top of things with the task force, and so, um, I'm impressed with, with his, what he's doing to fulfill his duties on this Board. With that said, um, I'd like to ask the, the Board's consideration for a one-time donation to the four Rotary Clubs that, as several of us, uh, recently, uh, attended a presentation that they had at COA. What they're doing for our community is unprecedented, uh, with respects to testing. Um, and they have used all their materials they have, they use for, um, as donations. Um, there's, all the Rotary folks, um, uh, donate their time, but they do have to pay a professional nurse, and they're in dire need of equipment, the proper equipment, to get this done. Y'all, Wally, do you remember how many they said they had done to date?
What, what are they doing, Bob? I'm sorry, I'm not up-
They're doing the testing.
Vascular testing.
Vascular testing.
Oh!
Yeah.
Now I got it.
Yeah.
Sorry, yep.
I think they're at two hundred and sixty-seven or something like that.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was something-
Yeah, a little less than three hundred.
Little less than three hundred. But they, they're in dire need of, of, uh, some equipment to, to do this, and, and certainly to help, uh, they're, they're paying, um, these folks to do that, but they could have, they could do more of these if they had, uh, some funds to do so, and I'm, I'm asking that the Board will consider making a donation, a one-time donation, to help them to buy some equipment.
Have you got a range?
How much?
Uh, I'm thinking in the range of, it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars to buy the equipment, and to, uh, help them get some more personnel in there to, to manage it.
Yeah, that, what they're looking to do is actually to expand, uh, from just doing it at COA, uh, because, you know, you gotta get to COA-
That's right.
Uh, and they're looking to expand it into churches, uh, and community centers-
That's right.
-and things like that, to be able to, so that more people can ac, can access the, uh, the treatment.
This, 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 this is impressive, where your results go immediately to your physician, um, and they have caught a couple of situations where it was, uh, an emergency, uh, that they had to get them to the hospital right away, uh, with this testing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well familiar with it, and we've, we've done it, um, I've helped out with several test, uh, clinics, and, and done it when I was paramedic, and, um, it's, it's very, it's very eye-opening, and it's, it's a simple test, and, uh, yeah, it does take some equipment and some time to do it. I'd be, I would be inclined to motion twenty, twenty thousand.
Okay. Um, thank you, Commissioner House, then there's a motion on the floor to make a donation to them for twenty thousand, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded by the Vice Chairman and Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, one question for you, um, if we give a twenty thousand donation, are we dividing it equally among all Rotary Clubs?
No, it, the four Rotary Clubs join together to do it, we just donate, they, they're all doing this together.
And then is there some contact person we have?
I'll get you that information.
Probably Richard Mark.
It's Richard Mark.
Yeah. All right, and then I'm gathering you'd like me to take this out of the contingency.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, Dorothy, do you have anything for us this evening?
I don't think so, thank you.
Coming to Hatters tomorrow.
Yes. We, you mentioned the markets, and we have been making our way to the various markets, and we will be in Avon tomorrow.
Oh, great.
And then in Kill Devil Hills next Tuesday, so.
Great. Dave, you have anything else for us this evening?
No, I've told the Board.
All right, then we need a motion to go into closed session.
So, Chairman, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one forty-three through eighteen eleven A six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, employer, or prospective public officer, employee, and pursuant to one forty-three three eighteen eleven A three, to consult with the attorney, employer retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to receive an update on the Blackburn-O'Hara opioid and Robertson matters, and to approve the minutes of the last closed session.
So much.
Because motion on, motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Overman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch.
There you go.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
Good call. Tim, are you on?
Hey.
Tell us when, Matt. Ready, Bob?
Yeah. I called the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turned it over to the County Manager.
Um, in the, um, closed session, the Board approved the minutes of the last closed session, they consulted with the attorney, employer retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, uh, in the matters of Blackburn-O'Hara opioid and Robertson, and gave the county attorney guidance. They also considered the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or condition of initial appointment, for an individual public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee, to wit the county clerk, and recommended that Skylar Foley be appointed and move in closed session to make that appointment.
We need a motion to do so.
You need a motion to make that appointment.
That motion's on the floor by the Vice Chairman-
Second.
-it's been seconded by Commissioner House and Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Skylar. Good for you.
Welcome aboard, Skylar.
Welcome aboard. Could that be it, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, County Manager. Very good meeting this evening, I need a motion to adjourn until August the seventh at nine AM.
Famud.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.